Now, if we do the pledge, somebody, somebody's gonna get. Somebody will get a case if we do that. They'll, they'll say we're disrespecting the flag and everything else.
Yeah, just right there. Stars and stripes forever.
That good?
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
I don't care, we can do it, as long as, just better to let it go. It may be, somebody might say it was disrespectful. I don't wanna, I don't wanna run the gamut. I got enough problems. Okay, you guys ready? Okay, go ahead and hit it. Good evening and welcome to the, uh, Long Meadow Select Board Meeting, Monday, January fourth, two thousand sixteen. Uh, we do not have a flag in our room, so we apologize for that. We changed our room tonight. We're in a rather small room. Uh, we have a full, uh, full audience. Uh, we're being recorded, li- or recorded and will be broadcast, I think, later this week. Matter of fact, we got the technicians actually in our room doing the recording, so thank you, LCTV, for coming in. Start out by announcements?
I would just announce that the, uh, this is the last week for the tral- trash amnesty for the extra bag. Um, and tree collection has started, and it'll go for a couple of weeks. Uh, for more information on, on either of these things, you can contact the DPW or get information from our website.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, resident comments?
There are definitely good people in this room. My comments will be waived until next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other resident comments?
Oh.
No, he'll, if, if you have resident comments, go up to the mic.
Okay.
Yeah. And he said, he said he would clear the seat if there was resident comments.
You're awfully kind, thank you, I'll be brief.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, my name is John Glenn, and, uh, I'm a resident of Long Meadow at eight Mohawk Drive. And I was one of sixteen or seventeen residents that signed and sent a letter to the Select Board a week or two ago regarding the DPW Task Force, and I hope you received it?
Well, let me clarify.
Okay.
Apparently, they thought it went out in our package, but it did not. I, Stephen gave me a copy of it tonight. Uh, it was, it looks like it was received on Janu- or mailed on December twenty eighth, and it looks like it was received on January fourth through our mail system, because there was a shutdown in our mail system. So, the board has not seen your copy yet. They will by tomorrow. We're gonna send out electronic copy tonight. So, we apologize in advance for any confusion.
Well, thank you, no apology necessary. Uh, I was hoping that, that, um, I could simply read, read the letter, and, uh, if there's no objection, I'll do that. Okay, thank you. Dear Select Board Members, several of us had the opportunity to attend a DPW Task Force meeting held on December ninth regarding the selection of a proposed DPW facility. We are writing to make you aware that many of the town's residents have concerns about the process used to date by the Task Force, the apparent consideration of future capital projects in isolation, and most importantly, the proposed DPW site on Wolf Swamp Road. Our concerns primarily are as follows. While we appreciate the work done by the Task Force and Stephen Crane, Town Manager and Chairman of the Task Force, we've learned that there have been no public notice of its meetings, no public agenda, and no minutes taken or reports made available for review by town residents other than the PowerPoint presentation used at the November town meeting. While we were told that the Select Board recently voted to change the Task Force to a committee, which would be subject to the open meeting law, we would have preferred a more transparent process, which was open to the public from the beginning. No one doubts the need for a new DPW facility. However, the proposed Wolf Swamp location, which is the top site choice of the Task Force, would involve the taking of significant field space, twenty to twenty-five percent, as Mr. Crane has stated, used by hundreds of kids for soccer, baseball, and lacrosse. Field space in Long Meadow is at a premium, and the removal of almost one quarter of the Wolf Swamp field space undoubtedly would create hardships and scheduling issues. We believe that the Wolf Swamp site would significantly detract from the aesthetics of the town. Should this site be selected, a beautiful section of town, which is currently "green" in quotes, with soccer, lacrosse, and baseball fields, the Field Club, Twin Hills Country Club, and nearby residential areas would be home to a large, quote, "industrial facility." Regardless of efforts made to make the building more attractive, the proposed new facility would be home to thirty trucks and other equipment, a salt shed, fuel island, and multiple bulk storage buildings. The facility will also contain a large paved parking lot. There's no doubt that this clearly would be a commercial slash industrial site incompatible with its surroundings. In addition, we believe that this project should not be considered in isolation. The Select Board has endorsed a new senior center as a priority, and funding for design work has been approved. In addition, the school board may seek funding for a new combined middle school, and improvements in water and sewer lines are needed. We believe that these projects should be considered together and prioritized with input from town residents, since after all, all projects, the, the projects' combined costs will be substantial, as will be the tax revenues needed to pay for them. In closing, we respectfully suggest that the Select Board and the Task Force slash Committee consider other available options, including the current DPW site, before a final decision is made and voted upon. Thank you for your consideration of this important issue, and as I mentioned, it's signed by seventeen Long Meadow Town Residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. And, any other resident comments? Go ahead.
I'm gonna also read my statement, and I'm gonna submit it to you afterwards, so you'll have it on record. Um, I wanna thank you for letting me address the board. I was not able to attend the November town meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Laura Murphy. I live at nineteen Tecumseh Drive. I'm a member of the Long Meadow Housing Authority Board and Coldwell Banker Realtor here in town. Um, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to address you. I was not able to attend the November town meeting when the issue of the proposed DPW site was discussed, but I understand only about a hundred and forty people attended. So, there are likely many residents like me who are unaware and still may be unaware of the issue. A number of people have recently brought this to my attention and have expressed concerns about the Wolf Swamp Field site proposal, and particularly, as importantly about the process that is being used to develop a proposal and to keep the residents informed. Most residents, including myself, understood both votes to approve funds for the DPW project or to further analyze the three sites, Grand Meadows, Wolf Swamp, and the current site. Is that the case, or is the DPW Task Force moving forward with the Wolf Swamp site as the only site? That also raises the question of the current Task Force Town Resident Members. There should be representatives from members of the youth lacrosse, soccer, baseball, and Wolf Swamp Field abutters, as they are stakeholders on these fields. I think process items are important, since so few residents were at the town meeting, and only very high-level information was shared about the selection and scoring process. I would like to present some questions. What are the key dates in terms of when critical decisions will need to be made? What town votes will be required and when? It will be good for public to understand how the process of site selection will work, e.g., which committees are involved in the process? Who has primary responsibility, and who are the members of the various committees? How residents will be kept informed of discussions, and what opportunity will be provided for resident input? Are the various committee meetings open to the public? Will the minutes be published? How will this be shared with residents? Is there opportunity for additional resident representation? What would that process be? I know the town residents approved funds to evaluate multiple DPW sites. For the May town vote, will the committee be presenting the results for the just one site, or results be shown for two sites and the current site? Thank you again for the opportunity to address these issues. I look forward to the answers from the Select Board, as there are many questions that the public needs to know to be able to vote for the funds to build a new DPW facility. Thank you.
Thank you. And you have a copy for us? Yeah, here, I was gonna get used to. Oh, you got a copy for each? Great, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other resident comments tonight?
Thank you.
Could you ask her if she's here for Select Board Meeting? Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Okay, any, any more, uh, resident comments? Nothing? Okay, yeah.
I did forget something in my announcements.
Okay, go back to announcements.
Uh, I did, um, a long time, a Long Meadow resident and member of, uh, a couple of boards and com- uh, committees in town. Doctor John Carey passed away, and I think the services are coming up. And we, I only just wanna, on behalf of, uh, the town, thank him for his service on the boards and committees. Uh, he was on the Council on Aging and, and one other board that he recently resigned from when his health took a turn. Um, uh, one of our DPW grounds department guys came to the office today and said that he, um, would see Doctor Carey walking along Russell Field every morning to go get, I would guess, a coffee and a paper or something at the gas station. He would observe him picking up litter and, you know, always greeting the guys with a, a smile and a wave, and he asked that I express, the department's, um, condolences to the family.
Did you, uh, were you able to get service information out?
I was, it's, I know it's in the paper.
Okay.
We have the, the obituary in Mass Lab.
Okay. Okay, no more resident comments, Select Board comments. Alex?
I guess I'd just like to, uh, thank the residents who came forward and gave their resident comments about the DPW, uh, facility issue. Uh, the comments they made are, are things that I, I've expressed previously, uh, including at the November, uh, town meeting. And I, I think it's great that, uh, residents are getting involved. Um, I think people should know that, that one of the key process issues going forward is whether this board is going to be voting on, uh, which site it's going to be. Uh, I think that's a very important issue. We, we've kind of wrestled with that, uh, on, uh, on this board. Um, I've advocated that the elected representatives make a decision on that, so that members of the public can engage with us, um, so that they can feel like, uh, they have some, uh, say in it. Um, because otherwise, uh, it's just an up or down vote on the DPW facility. Um, so that people, like the resident who said that they were in favor of a DPW facility, um, but, you know, had a problem with the site. Um, I also think that this idea of considering the, uh, projects together, that's something I've been discussing for a long time, and, uh, I think we're finally coming to the point uh, where we really have to do that. And if we don't do that, we're really not gonna be serving the town well. So, um, I, I encourage other people to make their voices heard on this DPW facility.
Any other Select Board comments? None? Okay, I've got about two or three. I did get a phone call from a resident this week. Turned out to be twenty, thirty-minute phone call, talking about street closings, uh, concerned about Quintetuck Road, want to know the procedures. And I pretty well told him what the procedures were. We have, uh, forms that we can fill out, that we can submit, and they can put a petition, as was done with Quintetuck, to the Select Board, and, uh, advise him that that was the procedure set up in our community. Uh, he was just very concerned. He wanted, he'd been here forty years and was very concerned on why we would do something like that. Again, without a lot of public input. Mentioned that the, I saw a letter in the correspondence here. I guess our police department and our, uh, fire department received a fifteen hundred dollar, uh, gift from, uh, Bay Path University, which is really nice to see come in. Uh, next meeting, I'm gonna be working up something on, uh, an old issue that we've discussed many times, the irrigation meters, or the lack of irrigation meters, or how we do something, uh, in consideration of different charges for water. I'll be making a presentation at our next meeting on that. Any other further?
Well, just the Bay Path contribution, what was it? Was it earmarked for anything special?
Yeah, they, they, it comes in very generic. It's for departmental, uh, needs, piece of equipment, professional development activities. It's fifteen hundred dollars, given to the police department and the, uh, fire department.
Oh, great.
It's in our, I think it's part of a pilot agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, no other comments? Seeing none. Town Manager report?
Thank you, Richard. Um, it was obviously a, um, brief report, uh, given the, um, I, I know I enjoyed a little bit of time off for the holidays. Um, I hope everybody had a restful holiday season. I, I did, and it was, it was about a, a few days off. Had some family in town, so it was nice. That equates to, uh, a light Town Manager's report. I do have an update on, as requested, on the Inverness, uh, and Avondale projects. Uh, we will, I think, as the report indicates, we are, um, we'll get, we'll get to those as weather allows. Uh, they're pretty deep excavations for pipe replacement and somewhat complex, which is why they haven't been done already. Um, speaking of the DPW, um, as we go, move from a DPW Task Force, um, to, uh, a Select Board DPW Committee, um, one of the things we, when that was discussed a meeting or two ago, wasn't really clear, clear how that transition process was gonna work. So, um, I just wanted to get some kind of consensus or a decision on whether the board wants to actually conduct interviews, or would be willing to accept applications from members of the Task Force, current members of the Task Force, and then approve, uh, appoint those members onto the committee. That was kind of the gist of the conversation. It was your emotion, Mark. I don't know if you have any, have any feelings on that, but I, I had inferred from the conversation that we were gonna just change the name of the group, but invite all the people that are on it to continue forward participating. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that they self-selected with, um, an application to show, 'cause s- some folks have had a higher level of attendance and commitment than others, and I wanna gets, have, appoint everybody and have issues getting a quorum.
All right, okay, uh, uh, my opinion is that we ought to run it like any other committee that we run, and, and essentially open it up for interviews. My, my request, my hope would be that the people who are currently on it will apply. I think we oughta try to figure out how many people is, are the appropriate people. I heard tonight an interesting comment, abutters or people in neighborhoods of, of, uh, areas under consideration might be somebody we, people we encourage to apply. I, you know, can't force people to apply. And then go through a, a, I would hope, a very abbreviated process, but I think we have a process for appointing people to Select Board committees that we ought to do, but, uh, uh, you know, my, my hope would be that the people who've been there would wanna continue. That's my opinion.
Okay. Any other? Alex?
Uh, I would agree. I, I think, uh, you know, w- one of the concerns that we've had expressed is the transparency of the process. I think simply reappointing everyone, and again, this is no knock on anybody who's served, um, uh, would not really engender the kind of, uh, confidence that we're hoping for, um, with this committee. So, to me, to open it up, just like we do for everybody else, I agree with Mark that, you know, we shouldn't make it a cumbersome procedure or a lengthy procedure. Um, so, I, I think we oughta open it up for interviews.
Right.
Uh, the only thing is, I don't want the process to stop or slow down, and I know it's really hard to get people in front of us, so we might wanna consider an extra meeting, if necessary, so that it, uh, it doesn't slow down, because I'm hoping that the town meeting will be able to have the final voice in things, and if we slow it down too much. But I know it's a really busy, between the budgets coming up, and we're gonna have a lot of budget meetings, so we just have, like, thirty days to really get this up and going.
Anybody else?
Well, I, I mean, I would like to open the door to any other folks in the community who feel they wanna have some input in this decision, because these kinds of decisions, there's a lot of things involved, and it's, uh, there's been a whole process, as we know, to get to this point, and so, uh, individuals who haven't been involved may not realize, um, you know, what we, you know, what they're, the current committee is facing, so, um, I don't know if we even need to, to respond, to re- let residents know, like, do an update. I don't know if, if, in response to this, letters, if we need to put out some kind of a press release um, about, you know, why we're at where we're at. But, um, yeah, I mean, it would be good for other people to ju- have the opportunity to join in, yeah.
But Rich, Richard, I, I think Marie's idea is of a, of a separate meeting to do interview, to keep it on track. I think that's great. But, you know, if that's what it takes.
We've already lost her four weeks now.
Yeah, well, if that's what it takes, let's, let's do it.
Yeah, I think it, I think it needs a special meeting, um, and, you know, I don't know how they've handled before, but you had a task force that was going. I don't know, have we ever had a task force converted into a permanent? No? So, this is new ground, so.
Who knows?
Well, I mean, in your memory, I, I don't know of any, I've not seen any, so.
But, I wanna make it clear, we have had task forces.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And we've had Select Board Committees. I mean, I think the fact that this was a task force, and some of the concern about how it operates as a task force is really more about the content, not the process, because, um, you know, we aren't, and it's, I, there was really no reason to, that we couldn't have done agendas and minutes and things like that. It was just a extra level of administrative work that we just, I, I personally wasn't really focused on. We were focused on looking at the project, looking at, um, the details of the sites, and, you know, for those who aren't as familiar with the issue, which apparently there are, there are many, um, despite the high level of reporting we've tried to do on this issue, uh, we have looked at many sites, and so I want, and, and we do have a lot of information we can share with people about why, um, the Task Force made the recommendation to town meeting that did. Uh, but it wasn't that, we just started with one site and focused on that one side. We did go through a whole, uh, process and look at it from many different factors. Um, the town meeting articles, to clarify for the board's benefit, were both unambiguous in that both the one that we got a year ago and the one we just got in November, um, both articles clearly indicated that the funds were to find a new location for the DPW. Uh, this board knows that there are many reasons why the current site does not work for a new facility. Uh, so, that was one of the things that I think we need to do a better job communicating with the public, that, that, even though many people have expressed that they weren't at town meeting, the legislative branch did make the si- the decision with the knowledge that ultimately the goal was to move the DPW to, to a new facility. But the feedback we've received from, uh, Mr. Glenn and, uh, Ms. Murphy has been good and valuable, and, uh, we've heard it before. We understand that that's important to people, and we are going to, um, either, based on the work of the Task Force, that'll now be transitioned to the work of a committee. We are going to put together, um, all the detailed information that we need to do, excuse me, to highlight, uh, what I believe are really compelling narratives about why the two sites that are the preferred sites, um, why they are the best, why Wolf Swamp is better than the other site, and why the current site, uh, would not work for a new facility. So, we know we have some work to do there.
Right.
Yeah, the one thing I mentioned town meeting, but, uh, I know it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we said we'd probably be able to have a report done by the Task Force, ready to go for public forums, the end of January. So, I also don't want us to delay the public forums by this process, so we're probably looking for meetings in January. And if we are opening it up, then we'd have to say, "Applications due by a certain date," so that we can get these interviews done, so we can get the public forum. So, opening the process, I just don't want it to slow it down.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you, you're gonna have a public forum in the end of January.
I mean, the report is gonna be ready for public forums.
We tend to have one, we tend to have a public forum scheduled.
Not, I mean, with all changing what you're doing, because this group may go back and re- rethink the entire process. I mean, there, all bets are off once you, you bring new people onto the committees, and, and I think the board must understand that. You could literally be starting over from scratch and starting to analyze all the reports all over.
I'd like to think that the mission of the committee would be to keep things moving forward.
Well, I would like to think that too, but we, we, right now have no guarantee you'll have any members from the Task Force on the new committee. So, you literally could be starting over from scratch.
Well, we do have a, we had tentatively planned a community forum on January twentieth. We can still proceed with just Weston Sampson and the town presenting the information we have.
Right.
I think that that, uh, would be enhanced by members of the Task Force, uh, but I agree with you. I think it's a reach to expect that we'd have all this done.
Yeah, 'cause you don't, we, we can't, you can't even tell me who's on the Task Force now, or the, the committee of the, yeah, and it could be all different players. You, you might have to go back to square one, Stephen. We could reinvent the wheel again.
I think to some extent that would, um, the, the Select Board, by appointing the committee, will be able to say, you know, pick up where the Task Force left off, um, versus go back to the very beginning and start over. And I, like I said, I would hope, um, there are many members of the community that feel like they haven't gotten information. The people in this room have gotten lots of information consistently on the work of the Task Force. It's been in every report that I've had while we've been meeting. Um, so I'd like to s- think that the elected representatives that had the information can say, "We're comfortable that there has been a process, even if we don't agree with the recommendations. Let's keep the, let's keep things moving forward, because the community has voted to support this project, and, and you've heard all the voices, there, there's definitely support for a facility. It's just a question of where." So, I think when we discuss the committee, that maybe something during the interviews that should be clear, that the mission is to keep, to, to pick up where things left off, not go back to step one.
Oh, I understand. I, I agree with you. What I'm just saying, the group will do as they, they darn well please. I mean, that's gonna be the nature of, of a new group. They'll have a chairperson, and they're gonna take off and do whatever they want. So, and, and I, the board is fully aware of that as we move forward, so I, now, I guess we'll have a special meeting, so I'll schedule a special meeting. Uh, how long before you can have applications in, Stephen?
We've received probably half a dozen or so, would you say? Yeah, probably have a half a dozen or so. We can put out maybe a week from today, or maybe middle of next week, and.
But the ones you received were based on a solicitation of the current members.
Right.
Have we publicly put out a request for people to apply for?
But, but the discussion we had was not advertise, the, the motion was, "Take the current Task Force and turn it to a committee."
But I think the law requires, but the, the process requires that we do that.
It's not, it, there's no, it's a Select Board policy. I was, I was following the directive of the board.
The agreement, like, just like you said, the agreement from this board last time was to go ahead and solicit the existing Task Force to see who wanted to serve. And now, this time, we've decided, and only want to open it up to the, uh, to the entire sixteen thousand residents, which is fine. It's, it's fine. I guess you can post it on the website tomorrow and get this out, but, uh, you're not, uh, what's your best guess? I mean, we're gonna need at least two weeks to get an announcement out and give a response back. So, then we would have, what, maybe the last, last week of, uh, our next meeting? Would be two weeks, and then we got another one in February first.
Tuesday meeting, 'cause the ne- the next meeting's a Tuesday meeting, 'cause of the holiday.
Tuesday meeting, the nineteenth, right.
Um, so if it's two weeks.
So, maybe the twenty-sixth, somewhere's in there? Okay.
Yeah, last week.
Okay, okay.
I just, Stephen, so the, the current, um, Task Force has how many members that are attending regularly? You have a rough idea?
Uh, five to ten.
Five to ten? So, um, so we'd be looking at, and most of those folks are gonna apply to continue, I hope, right?
A good, a good, a handful have, yeah.
Yeah. So, we're really looking at opening up three slots, four slots?
Not really. They're, they're not guaranteed on time. They want, they want to interview, so anybody that's on that committee now is basically off the committee until this board puts them back on.
This thing kinda, it fell out of the air. It wasn't, it was not on an agenda, so there was no time to prepare a recommendation for a number of spots, where this should come from, anything else. It was just kind of a, turn the current people into a task force, and then as I started trying to get that done, it occurred to me that, you know, should, we should probably have a process. Um, the people should be given the option to not have to serve on a meeting where they'd be expected to make quorums. That was the benefit of the Task Force, people could miss meetings and not worry about the work not going forward.
Do we have any idea how many people we want on this Task Force?
I would say number one, seven.
Is there any feelings from this board?
And not to exclude people, just.
I, I think we see who applies.
Well, it, it doesn't matter, how many you want on the Task Force? And we only have to see who applies. I won't, you know, we have feelings on how many people we want.
And we ended up with a school building committee of sixteen or eighteen.
By statute.
But it, but it worked.
The number's not specified in the regulation.
Would you like?
I would like to see how many we get to apply.
So, we get four. We're gonna have a committee of four, come on. Somebody, you, we're remo- we're remo- we're, we're rehashing the process. We've gotta have a suggestion on how many we want, to give an idea of when we're going out. He's gonna go out with an announcement, say we have sixteen slots? Seventeen, twelve? We want information, let's get information out to the public on the issue.
Well, a functional group, I mean, you know, up to ten, you know, like, that's a prime group, seven to ten. Um, but you want an even number, or, or you want an odd number, so you can make a decision. So, I would say nine would be the.
We don't do so good with an odd number.
Well, we make decisions, though, you know.
Yes, Marie?
I agree with Tom. Let's just pick a number, and, and we could say, uh, ten plus the town manager. And, uh, then if we only seat seven, then we'll go with a quorum, based on the seven, 'cause that's how we do with the quorums.
Okay.
If a seven show up, so, uh, let's just go with a ten plus the town manager.
Go for a committee of ten with the.
And then we can change it if we don't get the, um, numbers.
Eleven, so it's pretty close.
Okay, well, it would be eleven if that's who the town manager.
So, the town manager has a vote if they vote on some of the.
I don't know who's gonna apply. I think if you have twenty-two people, you've got the record.
It's only a recommending body anyway. It's not a decision-making body, so they can just, all they gotta do is make. It's only a recommending body anyway, it's not a decision-making body, so they can just, all they gotta do is make a decision to make a recommendation that this board or, and or town meeting will.
But it, I would imagine a lot of people are gonna be applying, if, if we're going with the conversation we've had tonight, that people hadn't had an opportunity to have input.
Yeah.
I would imagine it's gonna be a lot of people wanna have input.
Yeah, so I think ten plus me is.
Okay.
Can I, let's get.
Do we need a, do we need a vote on this?
I'd like a vote for that.
Okay.
I just wanna say, I think the task force now, you apparently have a finance committee member. He would not be able to be on a committee appointed by the select board per charter, just FYI.
Okay. Cast away. Okay? Ex officio?
Participate, he just wouldn't have a vote.
Ex officio, okay, so would somebody like to place a motion?
Okay, I move ten, um, that we form a committee with ten members plus the town manager.
There's a second, I'll second the motion, any more discussion on this motion?
No, I mean, I guess the, the, the one question I have is about the town manager being on it. Because that's kind of a new thing that we, I don't know if we've ever had a committee with the town managers on it.
Well, I don't know if we've ever had a committee the way it's talking. I mean, we asked, nobody can ever remember when it went from this to a, uh, select board committee. I mean, it is a major piece of real estate we're developing in the town, and we, we already can't have the CFO on there because of the charter. I would, I would think we'd want s- town manager, somebody mixed in that process.
No, I agree, I mean, obviously he'd be part of deliberations, the question is whether, I mean, when we have, uh. You, you know, we have many committees that make recommendations, like capital finance, right? And obviously, uh, the town manager's part of the process.
Right.
But he's not on the committee and he's not voting, because the point of the committee is to, you know, reflect community input.
Right.
So, I mean, I'd be in favor of eleven with the town manager participating, uh, as he does with the capital. Uh, planning committee.
Well, that, that's fine, whatever, whatever this board wants, Marie?
And my understanding is what this committee does, is this committee gathers all the information. And will make the presentation to, but it's gonna be decided by the town. And so the only thing is, this is a, a fact gathering pri- group that's not really voting on where the next DPW project's gonna be. So, whether you wanna say that the town manager's on it, we need a number of odd or ten, if they end up having, uh, they voted and they can't, it's. It's a tie, it really doesn't matter, because the matter is getting all the correct information on. So by now doing this, my concern is now we're slowing down the transparency of it. Because we would have started public forums immediately, and now we're gonna be delaying these by two or three weeks, so. Instead of expanding this group to even bigger, thinking this is the only time people are going to be having input, it's not, this is a fact-finding group. So you don't wanna have the town manager on it, that's fine, to expand it into eleven by people feeling this is the only way they're gonna have a voice. It, it, it's not, I don't believe that's the case, so, I, I wouldn't agree to it going up to eleven and amending that. If you want to say nine, and of course, we're gonna have the town manager in there because, and I'm hoping we'll have the CFO and everyone else attending and giving information. To the group, but you, you don't want the town manager voting, that would be fine, but I would not agree to it, e- expanding it up.
Go ahead, Ma.
Yeah, I, I guess my concerns are, and we're way out of, out of process here to some degree. But my concerns to a large extent, Marie, are, are that whether this pros- whether this committee is gonna come back. With a binary decision or a, or, or a range of decisions, and by that, I mean, is it gonna be, here's what we decided. If you don't like it, vote it down and we'll come up back with something else, and because part of the process that we heard was. That may very well be what comes out of it, is a, is, is a, here's the recommendation of this committee. For the town to either approve or disapprove, as opposed to the committee to evaluate multiple options. Present them to the town some such way, or the select board in some such way, that the select board and or the town can vote between. Multiple options, and because of that, uncertainty of how this group is gon- gonna operate. You know, I think that making it somewhat larger, and the difference between nine and eleven doesn't. I, I'm not gonna go to bat over nine versus eleven people, I think we, you know, however we do it though. We oughta make sure that, or, you know, say that the town manager's not a voting member, and we'll make it nine or eleven, plus the town manager, who is the. Ex officio, whether you call yourself the recorder or the staff member, or whatever it is. That we'll do that, so that the citizens are making this recommendation, and very honestly, then let them come back to the select board and decide whether it's gonna be a. Uh, here's our, uh, here's our proposal, yes or no, or here's the ranges, pluses and minuses. And, and you folks decide what, what we're gonna take forward to town meeting. So I, I, you know, I, like I said, I, where we started. You know, i- if we have eight people come forward, we're gonna wanna make, try to find a ninth person, if we have fifteen people coming forward. I'd say, let's cut it down to eleven, but let's see who comes forward, and, and agree that it's either gonna be nine or eleven, or somewhere in there and, and. And, and move forward, but without knowing who's gonna apply, I don't wanna put an artificial number of eleven, cuz we'd be sitting here for a month and a half, trying to recruit. Two or three extra people, that'll really slow the process down, so, let's just say it's gonna be between. A, a range based on who applies, and we can go to the high le- level if we need to.
You need to make a number, and it's seven, nine, something manageable like that, where it's not tough to get quorums. If we're serious about the project, and we wanna move it forward, let's get a number that's reasonable work with and get it going.
Well, I say we, let's go with nine, and then if you decide that we have fifty people applying and we wanna change the number, we can do that later. But let's just get nine and get the process going. So I withdraw my original motion if there's not gonna be an amendment to it, and I move for nine people.
I'll second your motion, okay, any other discussion? I have, I have, just, I have one, one discussion point. Um, town manager's a senior management official in our community. Uh, charge of all facilities, leasing, whatever, whatever, whatever. Uh, this select board can arbitrarily decide to exclude this person as a voting member on a task force, or to. Say that they shouldn't have an input, I'm not gonna be in favor of that. Uh, because if the town manager's not involved, and by charter gives him all the authority, then why would I exclude him from the process to at least have a vote at the table? Uh, it's going to be a task force not run by this town manager anymore, it is a select board task force. Uh, if there was any confusion before that the town manager was leading a group in a certain direction, that now has been changed. This group will have a chairperson, uh, town manager will serve on this as any other individual would serve and provide input and information. To the other general people in that room, if we have general public in the room that know very little about our government. He certainly can have an input at the table to apprise them on why this decision would be good, or why it would be bad, based on his knowledge of our community. And more in-depth knowledge of the procedures and the budgets and everything else. The CFO is not gonna be on this, I guess by charter you said, Paul, right?
Finance committee.
Finance committee, right, finance committee by charter is not on it, so I, I, I certainly find it hard to believe that the select board would not embrace. The town manager as part of this task force, as an operational member, I, I think it, to, to do that's a misjustice, and, and that's all I'm gonna say on it.
But, but, I don't think anybody said he's not a member of the task force in an operational manner, but I think if, if we're asking for citizen participation. And citizen vote, there's a discussion over, you know, I mean, the, our town manager, Stephen, will have all the opportunity to influence them, provide solution. Provide information and that kinda stuff, when it comes right down to it, it's, it's, who's gonna vote, you know, and hopefully, it doesn't come down to any votes. You hope that this committee gets down to a part where there's a consensus that they're moving in, in certain directions. Well, if there are votes, then there ought to be votes, but I don't think the town manager should be voting on a select board committee, that's my personal opinion.
Okay, so we have different opinions on that, okay, well, that's okay, that's cool. So, Marie, your motion is.
For nine people to be a member of this.
Nine people, and what, what is your, what is the motion for the town manager's participation, or are you leaving at all?
I'm just, he's, will be attending and par- participating, I'm not saying he has to be a voting member.
Okay, well, it's, it's one or the other.
Well, it'd be ex officio, I mean, by, I mean, ex officio means by virtue of the position, not, not voting. I think voting is, um, really a secondary matter, but. You know, the consultants that feed, that will inform this process are all managed by me, by my office.
And you're the head of the.
And I'm not gonna turn that o- I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna turn that over, because we would not be able to afford those consultants anymore. So operationally, the, a lot of the process will still be managed by town personnel, our director of public works will inform. That the committee on certain items. I think the voting thing, um, is a secondary issue, um, but, you know, I may end up. Being in a position where I do not believe that what the committee has come up with is in the best interest of the community, and I'll, I may have to say that.
And I'm sure you will, you're not a lawflower.
So, um, but that's fine, I mean, it is, you know, like I said, I, I only have one goal, and that's to develop a new DPW facility. That's my only goal, how we get there is, is secondary to, to just getting it done.
Okay, you satisfied with the motion, everybody satisfied, everybody satisfied down there with the motion?
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Call the vote.
Call the vote, yeah, I, I think I can do that, call the vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay. Did you get the vote, Debbie? Okay, thank you, um. What were we in when we got into this?
That was town manager's report.
Town man, that's what I thought, that's, that's twice we've done that, we've had a, an octopus type thing, and we've ended up with a motion and a, and a.
But he hasn't finished his town manager.
Yeah, well, we're not gonna have any more motions and votes while the town manager finishes the report, I'm, I'm giving fair warning.
Um. I think that's about, I can't even formulate a thought now, um, I, I think that, I'll leave it at that for the town manager. But I do wanna get into our presentation on, um, the next agenda item, uh, something, someone has a question about. Something that's been going on in the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just had a question about your town manager's report, cuz I brought it up the last time, and I appreciate this update on Inverness Lane on. You know, and, and, there was some discussion about how deep the hole was, and whether the town could do it, the not, town not do it, I think that. You know, just a, a, an observation that the length of time that this has been barricaded off, I'm hoping we, and, and I know it's weather-related. And today it's eight degrees outside or over, and it's gonna get tough, but having a barricade that literally takes a two-lane road. And, and we do that a lot, and that's not the end of the world, but I think I expressed the last time, and I continue to express. Going, I believe the direction is what, what, uh, uh, north on, on, on Inverness, you're coming around a curve. And all of a sudden you see these barricades, and it's, it's a little bit off-putting, I, I'd like to make sure that we. Make extra efforts to not keep roads like that, especially through the wintertime, cuz if we get a large snowstorm. That road's gonna be barely one lane passable at this point, and I understand how tough it is, so I'd encourage us to do whatever we can to move that along, it's been a while.
Just, the, uh, you know, these sinkholes, I mean, you know, later in the meeting, we'll probably discuss the sewer rates and water rates and. And these are just examples of the infrastructure of the, you know, the, the problems with our sewers and, and the system being antiquated, right?
Storms, sewers and water. This is stormwater runoff.
Stormwater runoff.
Some people call it stormwater sewer.
Right, but it's, but, but what we're talking about is water and sewer, which are their own enterprise funds. This does not have anything to do with water rates, sewer rates, or enterprise funds.
But those funds would be used to make repairs.
Not to this, not to this.
But that's actually, and not, not to get off the topic, but this is. We, we, there's a stormwater enterprise fund, you can establish that, we will, that, that's something we are looking at, um, in the near, to propose, but you're right. I think, right idea, wrong next to the enterprise funds, but the, but the idea of creating an enterprise fund, to cover these things is, is something we are looking strongly at.
All right. Uh, that, uh, that particular fault, i- it almost looks like the subsidence has stopped. Any possibility that you could just take it off and, uh, run traffic over and come back and let it go? It looks like the subsidence, wherever, wherever the soils are going, it looks like it has stopped.
It has, and I think, um, we could do that, but.
But without fixing the.
I'm concerned about what happened with the.
Well, it's gonna stop, they're not, it's not gonna puddle anymore this, this.
No, no, but i- isn't there a broken pipe under there, or is that what you just hope?
But he's saying it's full now, and if, if the water would just puddle there, that's, you're, that's what you'd like to see over the winter months if we can't get it done, is, is that correct?
Well, the drain is still sitting there right now, and it obviously is taking the water.
Very slowly, yes.
Yeah, I haven't seen it puddle, maybe I haven't been there when it's, I, I try not to go there when it's pounding rain, but maybe I should. It's close to the house, I'll walk up, Mark and I can walk up and look. Okay, let's, let you worry about it. Okay, um, anything else, Stephen?
Uh, I can't think of anything right now.
Okay, uh, let's get the minutes out of the way, and then we'll go to the VBS, uh, got approval for minutes?
Oh, I didn't see it.
We didn't have any.
Oh, we didn't, oh, I thought they were in there.
Didn't you see the note, there were no.
Oh, okay, okay, well, scratch it, no, I did see the note, didn't pay attention to it, I rely on you to remind me of that. The VH, uh, VHB?
Mm-hmm, sure, I'll do just a, a brief introduction. Um, we have Matt Chase from VHB, which is an, an, a traffic engineering firm that we've retained. To take a long look at our corridor improvements, our corridor of Long Meadow Street, um. And its intersection with Converse Street as well, uh, we are working on a Converse Street project as a part of the transportation improvement plan or the tip. We've discussed that at some length here as well, this is different, this is work that is, um, funded through our upfront mitigation payment. From, from MGM as a part of our arbitration award, uh, and this, um, these four intersections that we're looking at. Were, um, specified in the arbitration award as, um, what the upfront money was to be used for. So we retained VHB, who had done, uh, a lot of work, looking at these intersections in the past, to, um. Really do more advanced design work and study, uh, improvements that could be made to, uh, improve traffic flow both today. And also, um, when the casino opens, and we have those periodic spikes in traffic during events. Um, or, uh, tr- you know, tie-ups on I ninety-one, which we know we're gonna get anyway, during the viaduct construction. Which, uh, I should, as a side note, if anybody, um, hasn't seen, they do have real-time traffic cameras now on the web and, and, uh, the. Um, we've requested, I, I reported this a couple weeks ago, we did request a couple of additional message boards for the community, so. Um, people should really pay attention to the mass DOT, I ninety-one viaduct replacement websites, got great real-time information. So anyway, um, this is completely separate from that as well, this is something that started before the viaduct project even got going. Um, we spent a lot of time on this, it's, these are complicated intersections, as we say about many things, if they were, if they were simple and cheap, they'd have been done already. Um, and so I couldn't, I wanna commend VHB for doing a lot of good, uh. Background work, but also some creative, um, design work to make some propos- proposals, but. Show some concepts of, of what we could do to the intersections to make them function, uh, much more highly in the future, so. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Sure, thanks. Um, so again, Matt Chase with VHB, the, uh, the map that's up here on the screen is, uh, north is to your right. Just to kinda give you an idea of where we are, Forest Park, and then, um, the Forest Park Signal, and then you work to the Forest Glen. And then, I, sorry about that. Let's see if this works, there we go, so, uh, Forest Glen, and then head south to, uh, the Converse Street intersection. And then continues down to the intersection of Laurel Street, so that is a little bit over a mile, but that's the corridor impro- improvement project that I'm gonna be speaking, speaking about. Um, tonight, so, um, just to kinda run through a few things, we started this project in, um, I think in two thousand and eleven. Um, the three major intersections that are in need of, um, repair are the three that are listed up there, Long Meadow Street at Forest Glen, Western Drive. Long Meadow Street, Converse Street, and Inglewood Road, and then Converse Street at Laurel Street, so those are in that three area. Um, the Forest Glen signal, I mean, uh, Forest Park signal could get rolled in as part of that, depending on the extent of the improvements that we're looking at on Long Meadow Street. Uh, but over the years, uh, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has identified these three locations and these corridors. In, in their top fifteen bottlenecks in the Pioneer Valley, um, I believe the report was last updated in two thousand and ten. And Laurel and Converse Street was number thirteen, while, um, Long Meadow Street and Converse Street to the Springfield Line, that corridor was number, uh, fourteen. So these are issues that have been around for a while, and that, um, uh, as Stephen had said, there's, you know, uh. Some major improvements that need to happen in order to kinda resolve some of the issues that are out there today. Uh, when we started the project, you know, um, in two thousand and eleven, the project goals basically were to reduce traffic congestion, uh, uh, as you know. Um, can be experienced along this corridor, I did, I lived in town for a, almost five years on Farmington Avenue, so I had sat in a lot of this congestion over the years. Um, but to improve traffic operations and safety, provide future capacity, and kinda, and maintain the town characteristics, I can appreciate. Um, the town and, and what everybody wants to have from our future, uh, vision for these corridors. Um, the traffic volumes in this area, just to give you a little bit idea, Long Meadow Street and Converse Street both have about seventeen thousand cars a day. And Forest Glen is about, uh, twelve thousand cars a day. Uh, these are just a couple snapshots from, um, from the corridor, talking about some of the issues that are out there today. Um, you know, there's narrow lanes that are, that are present, uh, either there's no shoulders, um, that are available for bicycle accommodations or multimodal use. Um, a lot of the travel lanes are, are, are very narrow, or they pinch, pinch down, um, where there should be dedicated, more dedicated, uh, turn lanes. And the traffic signals are actually, they're, um. They were, I think, installed in the eighties, so some of these things are really Band-Aid and been, uh, kinda fixed along the way and are really. In need of a rehab. Um, some other issues we, we looked at, there were some, uh, we looked at crash rates, we, we evaluated all the crashes along the corridor. Um, there are a lot of, a high number of crashes in between the signals, which is tended to be a result of, uh, extensive queuing between locations. Um, when we first started the project, we did hear that there was a lot of, uh, some cut-through traffic, some of the side streets that are adjacent to these areas. You know, including Fur- Fernleaf and Ellington and Farmington and such, and then, um, some of, and the other thing was narrow shoulders, you can see some of the striping. Right here, there's about a, you know, maybe a one-foot striping at best in some areas where. Now, nowadays, a lot of the things that we look at are complete streets to, to try and accommodate every user and look for other ways to, to encourage other transportation modes. This was a graphic that we put together as part of this process, just to kinda show what some of the queues were. Um, in the area as a result of our data, data analysis, what we did is we went out and collected traffic counts. And we developed models for these three intersections, actually four intersections if you include this intersection. Um, the legend's a little off, the, the yellow is PM, but the red is AM. And what this shows is a solid line here is what you can expect as your worst-case queue during a peak hour condition. The dash line is kind of the rolling queue, and I know in some instances you've probably experienced maybe a rolling queue through here. Um, you know, some more queues back through this way, so this is, you know, we try to get the best snapshot when we go out and collect data when school's in session. Um, and get all those variables in there that are, kinda give you an average, um, condition to come up with a, a peak traffic flow in this area, not the worst case. We wouldn't collect, like during, uh, the biggest shopping day of the year, that sort of thing, we wanna design for something that captures the, uh, most accurate, uh, peak condition. So this is, yeah.
Is that, that's what's existing today?
This is in ten years, I'm sorry, so this is two thousand twenty-five. This is, so this is right, so what we do is we analyze our data for an existing conditions for two thousand fifteen, say, so we did counts in, uh, I think April in two thousand fifteen. We created our model based on, we did, uh, uh, four-hour counts at each intersection, we look for the one hour that has the highest traffic volumes during those four hours. And that usually, um, gives us a pretty good representation of what traffic conditions are out, out here. In addition, we did put roadway tubes out here and collected traffic data for more than, um, for forty-eight hours. Uh, minimum of forty-eight hours, so we're able to see how traffic spikes throughout the day and how it changes, in this case, a lot of, a lot of it stays pretty consistent. You know, in the middle of the day, there's not a big drop-off as you would see in some areas with commuter traffic.
How, how many different days, uh, cause the only reason why I say this, cause I, I personally observe queues longer than that now.
Right, right.
So how many different, like, over, how many days did you do the?
So the count, the counts, usually we pick one day and do a, in the morning count and an afternoon count. Um, I know there were, spent some counts out here recently, so we're working with DPW to try and get some more of this data that was counted as part of other projects and do a kind of a comparison. Um, and I, and I can understand kinda what you're saying, cause we will get varied results depending on when you count. Um, but the most important thing we wanna do is capture that worst-case condition, uh, or that condition that's not the worst, worst condition, but it's not also not. To a point where we're, um, cap- not capturing something that is a worst-case condition, I'm not sure if that makes sense, but, um. We don't wanna build something out here that's gonna accommodate one percent of the traffic, so we're looking at a, an instance where we're probably, where, where this is capturing. Probably the, the ninety-fifth percentile during that one peak hour. Um, and that's, the, the peak hour is the worst condition out of, say, the twelve-hour window where you might see your highest traffic flow. Um, from like five AM to, you know, late night, like seven PM or whatever that window might be.
So this is a projection based on one day's.
That's right.
Data.
Um, what, this is a projection on one day's data, but we also have, like I said, we have a, um, we did counts in two thousand eleven. And then we did counts again in two thousand fifteen, and we did a comparison of the two to see, and they were pretty comparable over the four years. Um, and then we also did roadway counts back in two thousand eleven, we did it again in two thousand fifteen, and we did a comparison of those as well, the roadway counts. Tend to be a little bit more, uh, like I said, for at least forty-eight hours. Um, the turn movement counts because they're specialized and you have to have somebody sit at the intersection and count each individual movement. Um, it's a little more time-consuming, um, a little more costly, so we capture, uh, I think roughly about four hours at each location. For each, before, four hours in the morning and four hours in, in the evening, so it's about eight hours total for the day. And then we take that model, we project this out to ten years, come up with some growth rates based on growth in the area and, and, and kinda project this, and there is. There is, um, there is some interpretation in the model that we use, um, but for the most part, um. It's fairly accurate to what's been, um, is observed.
Well, Alice, I think I agree, cause I take Converse Street on a regular basis, or, you know, around four thirty, five o'clock and. And it is just non-stop cars.
Yeah.
The whole length of the, I mean, I don't know how people get in and out, I, I slow down so people get through.
Right.
But I mean, it's, I think this is conservative.
Yeah.
A- actually, look at that, that's actually not that bad compared to, to the way it usually is.
Yep. No, I, 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 and I can appreciate that, it's been, you know, I've sat through these intersections commuting into Springfield for, like I said, almost five years and. Uh, I did sit in, in that traffic, you know, and experienced queues that were a lot longer than what I, what I'm showing here and it's. There, there's some limitations to the model as to how we can model it and the information that gets put into it, so there, and we're certainly not gonna. You know, capture everybody's experience from being out there, so we're trying to get that, um. You know, that best-case scenario that'll give us something that we're not gonna over-design, but we don't wanna under-design either. So as I kinda go fo- forward a little bit more, um, I think you can, you get a better sense for, you know, what we're proposing based on the information that we've. Based on what we've, uh, collected today, so. Um, this just gives you a kind of a quick overview of the proposed improvements that we started thinking about as we went through this process. Um, trying to create more of a gateway as you come into Long Meadow to kinda, uh, keep it, you know, um, a little bit more, you know, green or landscaping. Or something that has a little bit more, uh, of, like, that gateway feeling to it. Um, looking at new overhead black traffic signal mast arms, a lot of the signals out there, other than the signal at Forest Glen, which is an overhead. Wire where everything's hung on it, the latest technology and the trends that are being used in a lot of the designs now are the mast arms. So they're basically, it's a post with a mast arm that's anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five feet. In this case, I think thirty, thirty feet might be the longest that we'd be looking at, those can be ornamental, they can be black, there's all different varieties. Um, but for certain design reasons, we go with the overhead, it's, there's, they, they provide, uh, better visibility and they're a lot safer than the post-mount signal heads that are out there today. Um, there's quite a bit of, uh, um, you know, capacity, I showed you that chart and I know the, the queue graphic and there are, um, extensive queues and. And, um, there's definitely the need to be adding additional lanes and turn lanes out there, or at least define turn lanes and where they should be, uh, today. Um, another, uh, improvement was looking at doing a right-turn lane on Converse Street. Um, that's kind of a, uh, you know, the volumes today dictate that people are taking a right onto Laurel Street to go to. Forest Glen and come through that backway. Um, and there's some thought as to, do we add a right-turn lane? And does that promote people to continue to do that route, or do we wanna promote them to still do, use, uh, Converse Street and go to Long Meadow Street? And I think it's, um, it's, that's something up, up for date, debate, but given the trends that we've seen, people are gonna continue to take that route and go that way regardless of. E- whether you put a right-turn lane in or not. Um, and then the big thing is shoulders for bicycle lanes. Um, that's one of the big things I think would require a lot of the, the widening in areas today, in addition to getting some of the lanes up to. Um, more current standards, but there's really not a lot of areas where there's five-foot shoulders for those, that complete streets and meeting all the users that are out there today. So that's something that we wanna definitely, you know, wanna bring to attention to the board and, and have in consideration, that we're looking at all users as part of this process and not just. The vehicle. Um, as we go through the process, we're also looking to do, you know, new curbing, new catch basins. Um, new pavement and striping and, and such, and, and work to see, you know, where those things should be, uh, proposed. The next few graphics, um, go ahead, yeah.
One question, I don't know if this is something you understand, but if, you know, so a lot of folks, if they were taking a bike and they went on Route Five. I mean, and then Route Five ends up in West Springfield, but is that sort of the end, I mean, can they go anywhere, cause can bikes really go down? You know, once it turns into expressway, I mean.
Yeah, I think, but the limits on, for this project, bikes would probably not go past the Forest Park Signal. Once you get past the Forest Park Signal, that's a DOT jurisdictioned highway, so that's where they would, you know, they don't let. They could go to the Forest Park and that's where they would essentially either terminate or, you know, would be their destination, I guess, so to speak.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Matt, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah, sure.
First, a quick comment, there, there is a, I believe it's a written agreement, but I, I know there's an agreement with the city of Springfield. About that, that light at Forest Park entrance right by the Indian there in the ball field.
Yep.
And I was wondering if we have examined that to make sure, because I know there are times that we're not in compliance, the, the city of Springfield's not in compliance with that. That, that agreement and, and that's not our intersection, clearly we'd have to talk to them about doing it.
Right.
We'd be investing money into the city of Springfield, but, you know, first, first and foremost, I think we ought to make sure. We're all aware of that agreement and that there, we're maintaining that agreement because parts of the day. In, in mornings when that light is trippable, there are people making turns in the park. Backs us up to probably Farmington or Ellington or, or beyond that. Because that light trips a couple of times and, and those are the kinds of things that can make a very big difference to this model. The o- the other thing I wanted to just, uh, just comment on is, is you talked about early on in your, in your comments. Uh, maintaining the character of Long Meadow and, you know, you noted the, the importance or the recommendation of. Of overhead post-mount or mast-mounted, not mast-mounted, but. Mast-arm mounted lights, and I'm just wondering, you know, how significant is that recommendation? Relative to the fact that that is a character-changing kind of, uh, appearance to the, to the town? Not to mention widening the streets and cutting down the, the, uh, tree belts and things like that, I mean, are, are some of these things. Options, discussable alternatives to them, or it's, this is, if you're gonna do it, you gotta go this way.
Yep, so I can, let me just shake your first question, just quickly, so this right here, this line right here. It kinda extends through here, this from here down is town of Long Meadow, so from here over is the city of Springfield. So this nor, um, this southbound approach is essentially all in Springfield. So we have considered what, what we do, you know, at these other intersections and how does that impact this intersection? I think one of the things we'd wanna do, whether it's a, we can hard-connect the signals, or we'd be looking at at least modifying the timings at this intersection. So that it complements this signal, so that they can at least work together in a sense where if this is triggered, you don't. You, you can manage those backups a little bit better. Um, we have talked with the city a little bit about this over the last few years. Um, not officially, but just kinda, hey, we're moving a project forward, uh, we haven't brought any plans to them, we just said, you know, we might be doing some widening along this area. Um, you know, they're open to hearing those, they're obviously from a financial perspective are not interested in investing money, cause they don't have traffic up this way. Um, but their big thing was, and our, our big thing as well, is just we don't wanna impact the parkland, cause that would kinda trigger some other things there. So we just need to do some coordination with them on that.
Can, Matt, if I could, just, I, I made this comment at our last meeting, Steven, I just want, my personal observation from forty years of driving there is. Going south on Route Five, right along that area.
Yep.
It used to be two lanes at the traffic light going at, right at, at Forest Glen. And when the city of Springfield did something, uh, uh, improvements. Right, they turned it from two to one, and that started immediately backing that up onto the highway. Ex- exit, and, and it seemed to me that, you know, everybody say, well, it doesn't make any difference, but cars queuing up twice as much. People tended to feed in there, current, cars could turn right onto, wh- uh, I think it's Western Avenue from there that wanted to and, and, and it just. Actually, I, I, I should say it's three lanes, cause there's a, a right lane, a go straight lane and a left turn lane, and, and it just seemed to work a lot better. I, I, that's just my personal observation that it made a lot of, a lot of difference, I'm sorry, I let you go back and, my second question just as a ref- was the character of the town, so if you wanna.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, um, yeah, so I can, I'll go to the character of the town and I can come back to answer the other question, so. Uh, for me as a professional, for me, I, um, they have a, a manual on traffic control devices, so it's called the MBTCDs. That's kinda my bible when I, when it comes to designing signals. One of the things they recommend in there or as a guideline, they say, use these mast arms or overhead. Uh, signals as more of a, uh, for visibility, they've gotten away from using the post mounts. Um, from an engineering perspective, it, it would be my opinion that the overhead mast arms are safer and would provide a more efficiency.
We lose post lights all the time, I mean, you're absolutely right.
Right, so, in order for, um, it would be my recommendation to go to overhead mast arms. If we went something differently, I would be looking for the town to recommend to me to do something differently than what it would be in my best engineering judgment.
Good.
Um. If we went to the ma- uh, the post, the post mounts, I can tell you that in order to meet. The visibility requirements that you would need for all the approaches in the lanes that we'd be making improvements, you would need a lot more post-mount. Uh, uh, post-mount signals out there than you have today, and I think when you physically saw that, you'd be like, whoa, what, what happened?
Well, we used to have four, one in each corner, pointed, and, and because they fell down, we stopped replacing them, but almost all of our intersections. Used to have four posts, when I moved into town at least.
Right, yeah, and you need cer- a certain number of heads for each, for visibility and, um.
I'm not saying it's good, by the way.
No, no, I, I, I'm sa- I'm just, yeah, I, no, I can appreciate, cause I know this was one of the things that we talked about over the last, you know, three plus, four plus years. About how, you know, going from an overhead mast arm to a post-mount, or from a post-mount to an overhead mast arm, how that would change the character. Of the roadway, clearly, because now you have something overhead. Um, there are other, other towns and other communities, the way they address that is they have a, um, a ornamental post. Uh, the black ornamental post, fluted, with a, you know, copper finial or something on the top, something that makes it a little bit more. Um, aesthetically pleasing, um, but I, a- at the end of the day, it comes down to safety versus aesthetics with respect to the mast arms and new overhead signal.
Greg, I just, another question.
Sure.
Is the technology at a point where they could, where computers could recognize the flow of traffic and make adjustments to the lights? Is there, are we there?
We, we're there and, um, so the, the, the detection that's out there today, which is in the pavement, is old. It's been out there in the eighties and are basically mag- magnetometer loops, so they sense the cars coming over. We'd be looking at using kinda the same thing in the pavement, cause they're the most, they have videos now, video detection and that sort of thing, but the. The in-pavement is always really the most reliable. Um, that's something we haven't figured out, whether going video or in-pavement, but. That smart signal, using those loop detections, the signals now today with the new controllers and things that we would be putting in the cabinets, they would be able to process. When there's traffic on a certain approach and be able to change over faster to make, um, the signal operate a little bit more efficiently. We can also look into, and, and this is part of the design, we haven't got in, gotten into yet, cause we wanted to get, gain more feedback before we finish it, but we can also put in. Further detection back from the signal, or cue detection, so the signals can recognize, oh, okay, um, you know, a hundred feet from the intersection, I don't have. Any cars, but three hundred feet from the intersection I do, or the vice versa, it's, you know, three hundred feet, I don't have anything, a hundred feet I do. I can extend this, this cycle for another four or five seconds, it'll clear that out, or, oh, I've got some queues further out, but I don't have anything over here, we'll extend it out. Another, sorry if I'm like, another, like, ten or fifteen seconds to kinda clear that out as well. So there are, there are, there are a lot, from what's out there today, there's a big advancement as to what we'll be looking at.
Thank you.
So, um, Mark, just to go back, I guess, to your comment about the lanes, um, I kinda zoomed in here and this. Is kind of what we'd be proposing, I guess I can't zoom in here at this, the same time, but, um. You could see the three lanes here, the left, the through and the right, and that's coming southbound, and I guess what you were alluding to now is. You, you come up off the highway and you're in two lanes, and then that inside lane, you're forced automatically to turn left. And, uh, a, a good chunk of the traffic is turning left and going in the Forest Glen, but there's enough traffic going through where you really need that extra through lane. So you really need this cross-section that we're showing here and adding that additional lane going northbound.
But we had that lane before, was my point, I don't know where it went, I think it just went into a shoulder or something.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to, you know, where, of course, the design standards back then.
No, no, they just did it by painting, they didn't change the road, they just painted it from three lanes down to two lanes.
Right, and that's my, that's my point, the standards from then.
I'd like to say that, you know, if, if we move back down to the Forest Park area, you know, there's new people at DPW, there's new people in City Hall. I'd like to think that we could look at that, um, agreement that you mentioned before and update it, uh, you know, if we're gonna do this project, let's do it right and let's include that. So that traffic flows to and from.
Actually, on the agreement, is that something that you've seen, either one of you?
There's, um, and I, I haven't looked into the agreement, I know there's different agreements, there's traffic signal agreements that you're usually done in place. And I, I believe that, I'd have to go back and look at it, but I think this signal was done by, with state funding back in the eighties. So there might be an old traffic control agreement in place with the state, whether in combination with the city, when they did this signal, it could have been this whole approach that was done. So I can research that and see if that agreement was all-encompassing, cause I know that this signal was moved further, um, south. When they kinda closed off the old, um, connection up to the park and then slid it down here, so that might be all-encompassing of this intersection as well.
That's the time when the agreement was, the agreement included, and I don't know, remember all the details, but included. That's the time when the agreement was, the agreement included, and I don't know, remember all the details, but included times of day when it must flash, times of day when it. Could be set on, on tripping, times of day, you know, so there were times of day that, that the, the city of Springfield and the town of Long Meadow agreed. That we would not be impact, as, as impactful or impactful on the towns. So though, it was, it was pretty specific in there.
Have you, have you ever seen?
Yeah, I saw it once, I have.
I mean, I guess, the, if somebody sees it, I'd, it'd be nice if we could all look at it.
I'll look and see if there's a, the agreement, the agreement that I think I am referring to from a traffic and. Control agreement, I'm not sure it'd be that specific, but I, I'll, I can look and see. What might be available for that, and then I can share that with, uh, Mario and Stephen and, and it can be distributed accordingly, but I guess, you know, just going back. To this, um, intersection at Forest Glen, um, what this graphic basically shows, anywhere you see the dark. The dark, darkish pavement area is basically widening. So those are, that's showing you, the green is obviously the grass belts and stuff that we would maintain. Um, we'll be looking at doing a sidewalk and making that connection, we found that there's a lot of, um, kind of paths and wayfinding, I guess. For people who are kind of, are crossing, um, Forest Glen and working their way down to the park, so this is pretty worn out through here. Um, one of the things we talked about was making this connection from a si- a sidewalk perspective, putting all sidewalks. And crosswalks at this intersection to make it safer for people to cross in all directions, and then, like I said, this is widening to accommodate. Um, this is widening to accommodate the additional lanes, um, one of the things that we'd be proposing on Forest Glen is a, a double or a dual right turn lane. And the reason for doing the dual right turn lane is number one, we're, we're looking to add a, uh, to, to widen here and put two through lanes. In this direction because the volumes are there to support that, uh, and by doing that, you have to have two receiving lanes here. So by having the two receiving lanes on this, uh, on the far side of the signal allows us to actually put another right turn lane here and utilize that. It requires a little more widening on this part near the park, um, but by doing this double lane, we're able to process traffic a little bit more efficiently and faster. And then we can spend a little more time and processing traffic on the main line and kinda, you know, uh, balance our, our green time, so to speak, for the signal.
On the crosswalk, I mean, I can imagine, you know, if, at rush hour, if that, those crosswalks were being used. That would back things, I mean, like that could, you know, have the opposite effect of what we're doing. Is there a option, I mean, I've seen this in different places, like overhead bypass, you, you know, like a bridge or something? I mean, I, I don't know if that's way too expensive or not.
You'd be talking millions of dollars, just a million dollars probably just to get over, above and over, so yeah, that's, that would be, you know, that would, that would be really cost. Costly to do. Um, but we run into this all the time where, you know, all these would be a protected phase. Pressure would walk up, push the button, it would finish the psych, the phase that it was on, and then it would just shut down the intersection from a vehicle standpoint. And then the person would cross accordingly, and then once they were done crossing, it would go back to its cycle and pick up where it left off. And that's what you're referring to, it would be that, you know, twenty-five or thirty seconds where you, the pad button was pushed, and then it would just gridlock everything for. You can imagine thirty seconds would do some damage, and then it would take a couple cycles, you know, if a cycle is, you know, a minute and a half or two minutes. It would take, you know, five or so minutes to get back to somewhere where, where, where it should have been. There's other things that we can look at as running, um, concurrent phasing. Where, where if you allowed a left turn to go this way and, and the, these lefts to go at the same time, you could let somebody cross here and here. Concurrently, and you can set the signal up so that they could cross and wouldn't have to push the button. Um, it gets a little complicated for other movements, if you're crossing other ones, because then it's not a protected, protected phase. So there's options for that, but there, there's, you know, there's always sacrifices that come with the.
Craig, I think that for the city, I mean, they, that part, the crossing from Forest Park over to, uh, the stockade. Um, you know, that's, they, they wanna encourage people going into that other section of the park. Are we gonna have sidewalks on both sides of Route five that go down to that crossing?
Uh, right now, we don't, there is a crosswalk on the north side, right through here, so we're just looking, we're looking to tie into this existing. Uh, walkway today and kinda tie into what's there now, we weren't proposing a sidewalk on this side, if we propose a sidewalk on this side. We'd have to bring it somewhere, and there's nowhere to bring it along this side, and then I think it gets steep in this area. Um, so we either have to cross them here and then tie them in, which adds in another signal head, and some more timings and some crossings and. And I think it just becomes a little more challenging and, um, if this was something we were doing as part of the state. The state would say, yes, put sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, because it's not state funded, um, you know, I'm not sure if the city will say, we want sidewalks on both sides. Uh, but we have some flexibility, you know, to put one on this side if we choose to, um, or if we choose to just focus on one side. Uh, I guess it just depends on the des- the ultimate desti- destination that we're looking at, is it the stockade or is it the, the park itself?
These are, these are, sorry, we're gonna be here till twenty, twenty-five if we do this on every intersection. Um, and again, I wanna be respectful of Matt's time, um, I, I, the, these are, um, issues that. Uh, we've discussed internally in our meetings, um, certainly north of. That intersection is going to be a broader conversation with the city of Springfield. Uh, we can speculate all we want, but ultimately the city owns the land and the right of way and everything else, and they're gonna tell us what they're gonna allow us to do. But I just wanna give the board confidence that we are discussing all these same issues, we know, we wanna have it tied into our, our new complete streets by law. So we are gonna work with the city as these plans advance, and we have mo- something more specific to, um, uh, to, to talk to them about. Um, but right now, we're just trying to focus on, once you cross into the Long Meadow realm, how can we make that the best possible?
Matt, is there, is there an indication of where trees are along that tree belt and if any trees are gonna be impacted? Forget about that one, the Long Meadow side.
Oh, yes, there, um, so, we have a full survey of the intersection, so we have all trees located, I haven't called out specific trees of where they are. Um, we were, as we kept coming through in this section, we were sensitive to the larger trees on the side, and we know that. Over the last winter, there was one big tree here that was, uh, that was lost, um, that would, would have been in jeopardy, I think, as this project moved forward, but now it's no longer there. But as you get further down in this direction, uh, to the south towards, uh, the Converse Street signal, we were aware of. Kinda where roots were, where the overhang trees were, just, we didn't wanna widen and cut into that, into those areas, cause some of those trees are substantial and, you know, and nice.
Um, have, have we, have we talked costs yet? I mean, are we now, have we eaten up the full amount? Uh, we're now talking about bonding for years on and, or is it too early even to talk about?
No, we, we've, um, you know, and I only haven't made it past the first intersection, obviously, but, um, just working the way through the three intersections in the area that we've talked about with. All the widening, you know, soup to nuts with con- you know, with curbing and sidewalks and, and whatnot, um, we're in. I think the two and a half to three and a half million dollar range, so, um, I believe from what I understand, that's more than what the initial. Is with the casino, so, um, but we did look at it in depth of kinda what we call value engineering. You know, what if we went to Batumis curb rather than, uh, granite curbing, or what if we reuse some of the structures and. Or did new structures or, you know, for draining, drainage structures and that sort of thing, um, so there were a lot of different options. That we looked at and we had those costs broken up to some extent, so there's right now a, a menu of. A whole bunch of different scenarios and we're just, I think, here today to kinda start getting that feedback and, and, you know, before taking it. To the next.
I knew we were gonna go over the eight hundred, and I think there was a lot of discussion about the money we would get every year, is maybe bonding and paying for the bonding of that. And I personally would like us to see a plan for not just the next five years, but the next twenty or thirty, cause I don't think we're going to revisit this. For a while, once we finally fix it, and I know you did show some presentations of sidewalks and, and that are really beautiful. Uh, with the, like you see out and immersed with the pattern and things like that, which not only it shows the, the beauty of it, but the safety. That people really can tell they're coming up onto a crossing walk, so, um, I'm glad to see you didn't just. Try to fit into that, but tell us what our full range of options are, so we can plan for the future, so, thank you very much.
I, I know Stephen wants me to stop asking questions, but because Route five is a state highway, could we get state money, is that?
So Route five is, is, uh, it's a state route.
State route.
But it's not owned by the state. So, um, it's a town road, you can pursue money through the state, through the tip. I mean, obviously, it's a process, it's something that we were exploring initially, and the casino came online, the state told us to kinda sit tight, wait, let's see how that pans out. And here we are, we picked it back up again, um, there is the availability to do that, it's a competitive process, um. You know, we, there's, we've talked about phasing it potentially and going after tip money, you know, it is a process, the tip is a four-year. Document that the first, the next two years are pretty well spoken for. Um, and then the two years after that are kind of a free for all, so you'd be looking at best case scenario, two thousand eighteen, nineteen. You know, somewhere in that range, especially for a project of this size, if you did the whole thing. Um, the other thing that brings into that component is there's a lot more permitting and a lot more design process. That's gonna, would cost the town to go through and, and, and demonstrate the DOT. Um, that you've gone through this and it's a pretty extensive process.
Thank you.
Um, you want me just rifle through quickly the rest of, uh? So this is, um, this is the same intersection, and it just overlays the line work over an aerial photo and it, you know, aerial, doing this. Is a little subjective, cause it's, uh, the aerial's not taken at perfect directly overhead, but it, it, in a, in a sense shows you where the line work falls. With respect to, uh, the green space and the trees and what have you. And then this is the intersection of, um. Um, so Converse is right here, um, and then, um, Inglewood is here. So, as you come through this stretch here, we have to start to think, start opening up for a left turn lane. And using this striping is the proper way to do it, uh, right now, as when you come off the highway, you're kinda. You're put right into the left turn lane, and what happens if you wanna go straight and you're putting a right, left turn lane? The vehicle then has to quickly maneuver and get to the through lane, and that's where we see a lot of crashes, so providing this delineation and kinda. Like a shadowing the opening of this left turn lane, it provides a little bit more of a uniform flow of people. To kinda gather in one lane here and then they can make their decision when they get down through this section and go off either left or a through lane.
But there's no proposal to widen the road.
So there, there, there's, that's right, cause the, the lanes here. Zoom in, the lanes here are pretty well, it's, it's already there today, um, people. It's tight, it's tight, and you can see on this corner here, if you go out there today, the curb's all broken up and from trucks running over it, so. The major widening is at the intersections, and then, like I said, we tried to force everything to widen on, you can see the trees. The tree symbols, and I, I'm sorry, my pen doesn't work, but the tree symbols right here, so those are the trees, those circles, and they have a. Dimension next to them as to what the diameter is for each one, um, but the, again, the dark is the widening. Uh, and it is just to, to accommodate better turning movements, one of the things that we'd be looking here is to try and, um. Move the. Move the crosswalk, which comes through this way, right across, kinda not really mid-block, but away from the signal. And bring it up and bring it part of the signal, um, you know, either some sort of landscaping or some sort of delineation to get the sidewalk. To get people to cross at a protected crosswalk, um, it's always hard, if you get somebody to stop here. Especially if you need a dedicated right turn, you know, movement here to get people to get through the intersection, you wanna make sure that pedestrian is visible when they, um. When they cross.
Just a comment, Matt, that that, you know, that's part of our school, well, if you lived in front, you know. That, that little jog of the crosswalk's gonna be tough to enforce. I mean, you, you can do it, but you're gonna find people going from crosswalk to sidewalk to sidewalk and killing out people's lawn and getting hurt, in my opinion.
It looks like he's changing the sidewalks, he's bringing it down to the, he's actually building new sidewalks.
And I'm telling you, the people go through sidewalk, go over the lawn, cross the road, go over the lawn, go over the sidewalk, cause that's human nature, and so you, you know. You're gonna think we, we're gonna think we sent them someplace safe and instead we created something unsafe.
Well, the good thing is, is the town's right of way is all through here, so, you know, we could look at reconfiguring something that comes through even here, but, you know, or looking at. Bringing something back through this way, bringing it that way, I mean, there's things like that that we could look at. Snare trap. And then this is just that location, you know, on an aerial photo again, just to give you that perspective of where it falls within the, the neighborhood and. Uh, and then this is obviously Laurel, and then this, um, orientation's a little different, but you can see the. Uh, most of the widening here is on the corners to facilitate better turning movement for either larger vehicles or vehicles, uh, in general. Um, but you can see the right turn lane there, which is, is kinda, is coming. I guess that'd be the Westerly direction here and it would turn right, on, that's the majority of the widening, um, a lot of those trees that are, you can see how they're all. Located in that grass belt there, um, I'm not sure that we'd, would need to remove them, but we might need to do a significant amount of trimming on the roadside. Tree trimming, um, but that right turn lane, I can tell you is, is definitely needed, um, there's likely the need to do a turn lane. Um, because of the traffic, another, either left turn lane here, to really make this functional the right way. Problem is, is you have a house here and you have pretty tight right, right of way, um, and, you know. Making sure we kinda take everything in perspective, I would not want that person to have a sidewalk at their front door coming through, so it's one of the reasons why you don't see it on this part, on this plan. This right turn lane does make a pretty significant improvement, um, and I will kinda show you on this one, I think these would be around a twenty or twenty-five foot mast arm. And you can see the, the triangles on there, those are the two signal heads on one mast arm, and there'd be one at each corner. Um, so there'd be four, I think those are about twenty feet overhang, and we would dovetail a lot of that with our pad push buttons. Where we could, so you would have one post for the pads, you wouldn't be adding posts for push buttons, whereas if we did the, the post mounts, you'd have the post mounts for signals, and you'd probably have more post mounts for the pad buttons. Just so you can get all that, those distances and visibility to work. And then this is just that imposed on a, uh, aerial photo.
Have you had any thought if you make the improvements on Forest down at the other intersection? Do you think any of that traffic that currently comes down Forest Glen and down this intersection, heading south in town, will start to go down Converse?
You know, we, we looked at the numbers and, you know, as a traffic engineer, it's kinda one of those things where. You know, you can stand up in the public and say, we looked at it this way and this way, and somebody's always a traffic engineer and says, well, you could look at it this way, and you can be like, well, yeah, you could look at it that way too. We did take a look at that and said, well, what if a certain percentage of this tracing the traffic and understanding how much goes right here and right there and backing it out. Bringing it through here, um, you know, would that make a difference, and, um. The right turn lane is actually still needed, in that sense.
Oh, no, I'm not, not debating that right turn, I'm talking about coming in on the Laurel side.
Uh, on this side here, you mean? Yeah, I think, I think, um, if we make the improvements down at Converse Street. And didn't do like the dual right turn lane like we were talking about down at the other intersection, would people drive this way versus coming up that way? And I don't think that they would.
Yeah, how about coming back this way though, cause that's where it bottles.
Coming back from the, the highway?
Yeah, coming back from the highway, that's where bottleneck's pretty heavy at night, and you say there's, it's too close, you can't put a dedicated turn lane. And that's what backs up that intersection so bad, you got four vehicles, you stay, it's making a right-hand turn and they, they block it, you can't move, so then they snake off through the community.
The, um. If you were to take the left turn movements away from the Forest Glen intersection. Um, the only really effective way to do it would be to just eliminate that left turn and say no left turns, then you're putting them all up on. Uh, the Converse Street intersection, and that left turn will probably need to be longer, if not a double left turn lane. So you're gonna, you'll shift the problem somewhere else and, in, in, I guess, in, in, in a sense, we're kinda balancing the problem. Between the two intersections on these two roads, um, and I know we went back and forth on a lot of this of, you know, if you build it, will they come this way? Or if you don't build it, will they continue to go that way, and I think you have the people traveling the way they're gonna travel today, and will they continue to travel that way? Um, I think you'll, you'll still see people kinda favor that way, um, in either direction, I, I don't know that there's any way to. You know, restrict or alter people's traveling patterns unless you just flat out restrict them, restrict that movement. But I, I, I hear you, I think the only way to, to get rid of this, to make this operate better and get that left turn out of here would be to restrict the left turns. At the other intersection, uh, there's, you, you, we could certainly do that, we could restrict it during certain times of the day, um.
Well, they'd snake on through the neighborhoods too.
But they could snake through the neighborhoods too, so.
They're pretty shifty career.
One of the goals we've had, that we've talked a lot about in our meetings, is, you know, we get obviously frequent complaints from people about cut through traffic. Especially in the north end of town, you saw, I shared that map with you, um, that had the orange and the yellow and, um, and I, I think. I, I believe, and I think our discussions have kinda borne this out, the answer to the cut through traffic in those neighborhoods is to make those large intersections better. Um, you know, we, we've been dealing with Conny Hills and their speed limit signs and things like that, but the only true way to reduce volume is to make it the easiest pathway of being the primary path. I mean, that's one of our goals and I think we think that what Matt is showing you is, is going to go a long way to get that done.
But trucks coming into town are required to go on Route Five and then on Converse Street, right? They're not required?
They're not required, um, no, that, but there are. I don't know if we have GBW restrictions on any of our roads, I don't think we do. Um, I know people in Converse want the truck traffic restricted there, which we cannot do cuz it's a federally eight-highway road, um. But no, we gen- generally speaking, they, they take the path of least resistance as well.
Well, and down on Converse and, uh, uh, Long Meadow Converse is a turn signal too, so I mean, that's obviously where they're. And the other one's tight, they know they're gonna get tied up in traffic that other way. And, and there's no dedicated turn signal, so, uh, truckers are gonna go the other way.
Is this a proposal that can be phased in? I mean, can you do, you, you know, Converse Street first and then Forest Glen and then Laurel and. Con- Converse and Long Meadow Street first and then Forest Glen, or, or is this a, you know, all or nothing?
No, uh, we, when we did our cost estimates for, for the three intersections, um, you know, you can certainly phase it. I mean, um, it's something we've, we talked about, you know, for, the Forest Glen signal with the Forest Park intersection. You know, that might be your primary first intersection, um. But for me, I think the, you know, you could phase it in those three approaches. I think my preference or my recommendation would be to look at the Long Meadow Street corridor first and then focus on Converse and Laurel at another time. If that's, and then, and at that point, you could see if traffic shifted or if there's been any change or if traffic has, you know, uh. Either alleviated or operated a little better at the Converse Street, Laurel Street intersection. Um, granted that we know that something's warranted there, but if it was my preference, that would be the one that would kinda get phased in secondary. I mean, clearly the best bang for your buck even is to do it all at once. Um, I think as you start to segregate it and put out the bid in smaller chunks, the price probably goes up from bidders and from contractors. Whereas a larger project tend to comes in a little bit lower because of the quantities being more.
But is there a poss- possibility you can get, you know, you know, eighty percent of the, of, of, of the solution spending? Only eighty percent of the cost or seventy percent of the cost or, or this is, we're not gonna see any benefit. Because, you know, like anything else, resources aren't unlimited, even for something like this. And for the town to come up and say, look, we can afford this and not yet that, let's do it and see what happens, having this other part in our, in our back pocket.
I mean, it, it certainly, you're phased, you could do a phased approach, it's, it's doable. It's just, there will be, there'd be sacrifices obviously on other ones that, that have needs versus what is the priority, you know.
Okay, any other questions?
Did you say it was three and a half million for all three?
So there's, um, there's a, it's a range because there's a lot of different options, but it's, I would say, on average, it's, it's, it's like three million dollars for all three and for the corridor.
Um, I mean, I, I'll just make this one comment, I, to.
And that's just preliminary numbers now, I mean, we, we've engineered it, you know, maybe twenty percent of the way. So there's still engineering and refining of that estimate, but with the information we have now, that's what we're.
I would encourage, it, I thought this was a great presentation, by the way. And, uh, the, the one comment I have was when we were looking at the queues for twenty twenty-five, your projections. I mean, as somebody who has to live in that for, you know, day in, day out. That seemed to me lower than what it really is. I mean, like, so I, I would encourage, you know, as we go forward to get more data. Uh, it's not unusual for it to be backed up from Forest Glen all the way back to Converse. And then Converse back, you know, to CVS. You know, heck, it sometimes even goes all the way back to the green, if you can believe it. Um, and I think it's very common on the, the Forest Glen, uh, approach to that intersection.
To hit the bend.
Yeah, and beyond, and, and, and before that. Um, so, uh, you know, it, I don't know if that would impact what the recommendations would be. May, maybe, you know, the, the fixes are the same either way and, and, you know, the, you know, the, the, uh. Diminution of traffic is, is just gonna be less than we would hope and, and that's the best we can do, but, uh, I mean. You know, the, the amount of traffic, uh, you know, in the mornings and the evenings is, is, is really huge on, on both of those approaches. And, and that doesn't even include all the people cutting through Fern Leaf and, and all those streets.
Yeah, I mean, um, you know, we could, we could count that, that every day for, well, three hundred and sixty-six days out of the year, it's a leap year, right? So we could collect that and get all kinds of different results, I don't think that would really change, in my professional opinion. What we've looked at over, from two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen and even counts that I think PVPC did in two thousand two. And just seeing the progression of traffic through the area and seeing what, what they reviewed as improvements for these intersections and what we're recommending. I, I don't think that there would be a change in what we're recommending based on additional data that we would collect. It would probably continue to reinforce the data that we're, and the proposed improvements that we're showing. And one of the things that I, I could work to do is to show kinda how some of this might be improved with, with the traffic. And show you what the queues would look like, um, so if you have a queue like this, you know, we'd be projecting it, cutting it. You know, whether it's in half or what have you, like, that's the information I could give you, but to assess every hour or every worst-case.
Saying more than one day's worth. And, and part of the reason I'm saying this in terms of us, you know, getting support from the public. You know, Tom and I could look at, anybody who, who, who drives there can look at those. At those projections and see, geez, that's not really as, as bad as it is. And, you know, it, and I, I think if we start selling something to the public. That suggests that the traffic is, is going to be better than it really turns out to be, then, then, there's gonna be a lot of disappointment.
We can certainly look and see what, um, I know we've counted during, um, certain times of the year, obviously with schools in session. But we can certainly go back and look at all the data we have. I know we're currently working with Mario at DPW to gather some of the counts that were done recently as part of, uh. Uh, casino look-back study that they were working on, so we're gonna compile, look at that data as well and look at that everything. If we need to go out and get another time period, um, or another month, that might be, uh, worth looking at. In addition to the months that we've looked at already, um, I think that would be a, that would be a good idea, just to get that holistic approach and look at different months or different times of the year. Cuz as I said, it's, it would be difficult for me to capture, you know, what you're experiencing versus what someone else might be experiencing. Would harder to capture that one moment on paper, counting it. Um, but certainly to collect more ob- another observation or look at the other data, I, I definitely think that's, that's, that's reasonable. And it's an easy thing to do too.
Okay, Marie?
What's the next step in the process? Uh, I know you were talking to, is this going to a public forum or, uh, what do we do next in this process?
Well, we, we have some more work to do, we, we just wanna get some kind of initial feedback, I mean. Um, you know, I think the thing we're concerned about is, you know, there is some widening. Which if you're widening the road, you're narrowing the tree belts in certain areas. Uh, we wanted to, you know, put it out and then the signal's changing from posts to mast arms. We wanted to at least get this board comfortable, um, with those concepts in terms of things we are looking to pursue as we advance the design. Um, you know, I think to, to, to Alex's point, I, I, I agree with you, Alex, managing expectations is gonna be a part of our public. Uh, information or our public education. We've had our own conversations with, you know, it's still not gonna make it perfect. And it's an awful lot of money to spend to not get a, you know, the ideal solution. But I, I think one of the things we've discovered through this is that whether you've counted all, and it, to some extent this fits in with what GPI was discussing with us. During, uh, the casino mitigation discussion. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but I think what, what we learned is, once you hit a certain point of traffic. And queuing, it doesn't matter as much whether it's ten percent more, twenty percent more you didn't capture. There's not a tremendous number of tools in the toolbox to deal with these issues. In fact, when we talked about the traffic calming policy, when, and then you did the research on what are examples out there of what, you know, communities do. There aren't a lot of different things people do, there are a lot of different versions of the same things that people can do with traffic calming and signals and widening. But there's no magic device and so what I think Matt has recommended based on, um. Based on not only all the information we collected during the arbitration process, but also, um, on all the other projects we've done in town. Is a, he used the right word, balance. How do we balance out the, the situation the best we can? Uh, and I think that this is a very, very good start. So again, I think in terms of next steps, it's continuing to refine the design. If, if, uh, the board feels good with where things are heading and I appreciate the positive feedback on it. Uh, we'll continue to go to meet, we'll, you know, engage the city of Springfield in a discussion about that intersection. Uh, we just didn't wanna have a non-starter in these, in our concepts that would make it have, make us have to go back to the drawing board at this stage. I haven't heard any, so I think we're gonna keep moving forward and advance the design and you're right, get ready for public involvement at some point in time. I think that one of the next steps we get to will be a financing plan to figure out what would this all cost? How do we finance it, phasing, you know, look at those options. Uh, if it in turn, if it turns out that we're gonna need to, um, bond some funds. Then we would look to some component, I would guess, of our annual mitigation funds, um, to offset those costs. We're not gonna be seeing those funds for another year anyway. And so then you have a, a question of timing and, you know, seek and, and doing it all. So the, the work lines up with when we need it to, um, when the casino opens. But then the financing also lines up when we're getting the revenue in to pay on, pay the cost. So there are still a few moving parts on this, but we wanted to at least get people, um, familiar with the direction, the, the big decisions. Where those are kind of lurking on the horizon.
Steven, just a quick, you know, I asked a question about alternatives and the character of the town and the mast arms and. And, and I think that one thing that would be helpful is for, you know, VHB and, uh, to, to give us some alternatives. And also, you know, if, if there's some kind of a conceptual photo, cuz we've seen some pictures here of what it would look like. I gotta tell you, some of the pictures that were in your presentation, which are from other towns of, of similar intersections, might be, uh. Eye-opening or, I don't know, I don't wanna use some other description, but to people along the, but I think we need to get those in some publications. So people can see what is it and say, look, you know, ours isn't gonna look like this or it is gonna look like this or here's what we're gonna do decoratively to try to get that. And that, cuz I, I really am concerned that, you know, we, wider roads, granite curbs, uh, curbs, you know. Wide bicycle lanes, overhead, you know, it really will change the character of that quarter portion, portion of, of the town. And I wanna make sure that, you know, we're consistent with the, what we try to put down as a historical perspective of the community. And I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying we gotta really push.
Why, Marie, Tom?
Well, Steven, I would say that we probably should look at, you know, putting up our own welcome to Long Meadow kind of sign. That would maybe offset some of this, um, thing that looks like, you know, like a highway. You know, like, like they're going in this town, you know, with all these big lights and everything and maybe we could have some kind of a welcome along, I know that. We don't really have one now, other than what the town, whether, with the, what the state provides, but maybe there'd be something else we could do. Um, that would sort of give us that character or that presence when they came in to make us look good.
Like neon?
Non-neon, I would say. One of the big saddle hats.
Breakfast all day, two ninety-nine.
Is it possible, is this ready to be able to put up on the website so people can go back and refer to it or how soon?
No, I, we're not there yet, because I don't want people to get, this is still preliminary designs and it's not like, so we're not, we're here presenting it to the public. But we don't want people to get fixated on a particular tree that may or may not end up being taken down or, I mean, we're, it's still very preliminary. We have some work to do on the design before we put this out as this is what we're gonna be building.
Speaking of which, can we get a copy of this?
It was in last month's packet. Oh, shoot, it was in both.
You ask, you shall receive.
Twice.
Anything else, guys? Thank you very much. Steven, appreciate you getting them set up to come in too, I think it was a valuable meeting, it's his first step, first show we've had really, select board answer the public. To be able to see what's starting to take place.
And I know you didn't show the last slide, but that was a great slide, showing the various sidewalks and everything, yeah, the options.
And, and there's, I mean, there's a lot of different options, I'll have to go that, it's something that could be considered colors or. It's basically decorative crosswalks, like brick imprinted, cost efficient, durable and not having, you know, there's a lot of different options on that, so.
What, are we at least a year away in planning?
I, I mean, I'd say we, we could be ready much sooner than that to sort of go, you know, develop bid specifications and, you know, move forward with the bidding of the project.
But we're like a six-month before public hearings and all of that, that kinda stuff, okay. I just don't want anybody thinking it's gonna happen next week.
No, no, but it is something that is, is ongoing.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, senior and veteran tax abatement program policy updates. No, I, you got the pricing, that's the only thing we changed. What, the minimum wage is gone, what is it going to now?
I think, I guess the, the question is, does the board wanna make modifications to this at this time?
Now, by law, we've gotta have the, the price in between, what, the federal and the state? Uh, federal and state, is that correct, Paul? But doesn't it have to be between state and federal?
Not that I'm aware of, but I, it might have, it may have to meet the federal minimum wage, but it has nothing to do with the state.
Right, I thought it had to be between the two, or at least no, no less than, than, than the bottom one.
No less than the federal.
Right, no less than the federal, what's the federal this year?
Uh, off the top of my head, I couldn't.
Seven and a quarter?
That's low.
Seven and a quarter, and see, this policy was set at six seventy-five.
A- actually, the policy, it, it's, it's six seventy-five that is given as an abatement, but the actual, um, amount that is given on a W-two is seven thirty. Ninety-two, I think, is on page, uh, two or three, because the town also has to kick in the, uh, the FICA and Medicare portion.
Does it, does that count as the salary based on?
It, it is taxable at the federal level, not taxable at the state level, but because it's a non-cash outweigh. The, obviously, the federal government is still gonna expect the cash, so we, the town actually has to pick up that aspect of the, of the, uh.
So it says six seventy-five, Paul.
The six seventy-five is the actual abatement that the, uh, participant is going to get. The taxable income that is reported is the seven, uh, seven.
Oh, it says plus the employer's share of FICA Medicare fifty-five ninety-two, okay.
Right, it, it's, and, and I think to clarify, the abatement is for, for those, you know, we introduced it, we have a senior abatement program. That allows, um, senior residents that meet some cr- criteria that are set for us here in the application. Um, allow them to work in town offices in various capacities. Um, to offset some of their property tax burden. Um, so they don't really get a wage per se. Uh, we've calculated what the value of the abatement is based on the numbers Paul was just kicking around. Um, so it is an offset to their tax bill, not a, like a paycheck for them, but the cost to us to do this is, um. You know, seven hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-two cents per participant. And we have a cap in the policy of, I believe, twenty thousand dollars available, which, um, limits the number of people that can participate.
Do we get the full amount every year that we both sign up?
Um, I don't think there's ever been twenty-seven, I don't recall there being that many ever.
That, that's typical.
The high teens? Um, I, and I don't believe also, I mean, we opened it up to veterans a couple of years ago. I don't think there's been too many veterans that have actually participated in the program also, even though we accepted a new section of the, of the law a few years back to allow them to participate.
Yeah, I had a question about the eligibility, um, in one part it talks about the quarry, having quarry check. And now would a quarry, having stuff on a quarry disqualify a person, is that why we asked for that?
It depends, but.
It depends where they're being placed for the most part, if they're being placed at Greenwood, they may not be placed at Greenwood because there are children and elderly there. Or they could be probably maybe, uh, allowed to work at Town Hall where they're not children.
Okay, alright.
It, it, something to that nature.
So it's more about the placement?
But if they have, say, an embezzlement, if they've been convicted of embezzlement, we wouldn't want them working in an area where they would be touching cash.
Well, cuz, you know, one of the things is, you know, in, in my work, you know, we have folks who, um. Well, cause, you know, one of the things is, you know, in, in my work, you know, we have folks who um, go through a difficult time in their lives, and some may be veterans. Um, um, and they may have trouble with the law because they had trouble with the drinking his- history, and, and we sort of know that upfront, that, that one of the things that comes with that territory. Now, they may be sober by the time they're eligible for this kind of a program and um, and so I wouldn't want something that happened to them in their thirties or something to disqualify them for a program that they might need in their sixties, um, when they are sober and doing well, so.
I'm not so sure the quarry check goes back.
And as you know, they recently changed the law to make it much more restrictive on what you ha- on what employment you can deny someone based on, on A, when you can run a background check. Like a quarry check, and then B, what information you can use to make an employment decision that has been tightened up and, uh, cause, you know, we go through this a lot. Um, we just have to be, just make sure we're using good judgment.
You're pretty close to the, I think the, the, the guidelines went up to seven fifty? For, per person, you're running at seven thirty ninety-two?
I, I think we said that if it went up to seven fifty, the overall cost would go up to about twenty-three hundred dollars with the twenty-seven participants. I, I think that was only an example.
I guess the state allowed you to take it to seven fifty, but then I've read some communities online that they give away a thousand, or they have a thousand.
The state will give you, give the abatement up to a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So you could actually have the abatement go up to a thousand dollars. We would have to kick in our share of the, the FICA and Medicare, so it might cost us, you know, eleven hundred dollars per in- individual, um, but, but we could go up to a thousand. I used.
You just reduce the amount of people in the program, wouldn't you?
If, if you wanted to keep a cap, yes. If you wanted to keep a cap on it, you'd have to reduce the amount, yes.
Right.
So, uh, uh, I, I guess my question is, is what is our intent by doing this? Is it to provide those citizens who are, who, who would like to, an, an opportunity to uh, achieve their taxes, uh, abate their taxes to some degree? Or, or is it a, a desire just to, uh, you know, uh, de- address fewer people or, or even just, you know, maximize the tax abatements? Because one thing we could do, for example, is say, we are going to commit twenty thousand dollars of total town money to this per year, and say, with the deadline, you must apply by this point. However many people apply, they can get up to a maximum of, you know, a minimum of so much, a maximum of so much. So if there's a hundred people apply, you're gonna take the first, however, twenty-three or whatever it is to get you, I guess twenty-seven's the number that gets you to, to, to the twenty thousand dollars. But if fewer people apply, say, well, you know, would we be willing to offer them an opportunity to abate greater funds, assuming that they needed the ability to do that? And my personal opinion is, you know, if we wanna commit this fund, you know, we oughta make a, a range of money available depending on a first come, first served basis. There, it, there is a, a time limit to apply. This isn't a rolling process. The, the way I, I read this, it's a, it's a
Annual.
It's an annual process, and if, as you said, we get in the high teens, would we not wanna offer this to, offer additional money to that few, fewer number of people? But recognize that, you know, you won't know what your, your abatement will, you know, if you, will be first come, first served, a minimum of what it is now, which I believe is five hundred dollars, and it may be as high as something higher, depending on who, how pe- how people apply. That's my opinion.
Um, my question is, was there a problem? I mean, I, one of the reasons we were looking at this, we wanted to make sure that everything lined up correctly, but to change the policy, I would say, is there a problem? Have people been complaining that they need more or anything? So I hesitate to make any changes unless we've really come up with a problem that exists.
Reason it's brought up, I, I brought it up. I, I'm the criminal here. Because I was unaware. I looked at the policy online and it was dated like two thousand twelve or something, and I thought we had been not updating our policy. And, and the conversation is, it started to come up, then Paul said, no, we have been updating it. And you can see down here, that it's not online that shows the updates, but on his records, it shows it was updated two thousand thirteen. So they've been staying pretty well, uh, up to the speed of the law.
Originally, I think the abatement was five hundred dollars when we started. It did go up to six seventy-five. And I couldn't tell you exactly what all the changes were, but I know the last change was to allow for the veterans.
Right.
Which was a statute that was accepted at town meeting a few years back.
And I, and I did find with the research, Marie, that it appeared to be several boards, uh, throughout the Commonwealth, that this issue was brought up annually. And it was a vote issue. They were briefed by the CFO and they voted on the, the new program for that year. That's the reason it's, it's before. There's not been any problems with the program. And nobody's complained except one select board member who sits in a chair.
I think it's great to review things. I agree with you, Richard. I was just saying, for us to actually make a change to it now and vote on a change, I would say, what is the reason we wanna make the change?
I'll, I'll tell you, one reason is, it's got two, it's got all the wrong dates in it. I think if we're gonna rewrite it, and we ought to, we ought to make it, if you will, at least year neutral. So it says by December first of the fiscal year and, but this has all kinds of dates of two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen and, you know, under how to apply. Applications must be received by December second, two thousand thirteen. According to this policy, nobody can apply anymore. I mean, we're either gonna vote, obey the policy, or we're not gonna obey the policy.
I think that particular policy was in reference to FY fourteen.
Yeah.
But I understand what you're saying, and every year it does get updated. But it, again, it's usually done at the council on aging, and I have, and I think.
That's, that's.
And it doesn't get updated and voted by the select board because I've never voted on it.
Doesn't, and, and it likely should, and that's why we brought it up, but it, they've been updating it administratively. It's just that it hasn't been updated on our policies, and that's where the confusion started.
But to answer your question, there's not really a problem. I actually think the program works pretty well as, as it's presently constituted. If we wanna just, um, you know, one of the things we can do is just take out, like you said, Mark, just strike out the years that are in here, and, and the title where it says calendar year, and then add this abatement to our calendar year fee schedule that gets reviewed every year. Um, and so we're at least, even though it's not a fee, if we put it on that spreadsheet, we'll at least look at it every year.
I, I'd prefer, Steven, to put an abatement line in our budget, and therefore we do it when we approve the budget. We'd approve a a, a senior and veterans tax abatement as part of our budget proposal, let the town vote on it every year. Can we do that, Paul?
The town really doesn't vote on the budget or the, the abatement amount. The, the select board, it, 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 it's built into all my estimates. It's done as, as net, um, a lot of times, and then the detail will show it. We could certainly segregate it into those that are property value based as opposed to those that are senior or, or ve- or veteran workout programs, and we could separate it in that fashion so the board would see it. And have the opportunity to look at it in that fashion.
I just had a question that may not occur to everybody, but I, I look at, um, you know, during the sixties, there were a lot of people who were veterans, but there were also a lot of people who worked for the Peace Corps, and I don't see why they would be excluded from this sort of benefit.
It's all by statute.
Well, it's by statute.
It's by statute.
So they don't consider them as, uh.
Again, if the statute had mentioned Peace Corps or something like that, but it's all by stat- statute, and I think the statutes are actually listed at, in the heading of the, of the, uh, of the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess one reaction I had, uh, first a question, then a, then a comment. So my question first is, what's the, what I haven't heard is, what's the value we're getting back from the services? I mean, i- is this, is this something that's beneficial to the town? Is it?
It's, it's mixed. It's mixed. You, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna have some that, that come in that really do a valuable service. You're gonna have some that, that come in that, um, probably aren't up to snuff for, for whatever task they were assigned. And maybe should be reassigned or something to that, but it, it, it's hit or miss on, on the actual value that's given.
Okay. I mean, I guess the, the other reaction I have to this, I mean, the way I read it, uh, you can get a hundred hours and then the most you can get is six seventy-five off?
Uh, six seventy-five abatement, that is correct.
So that's six dollars and seventy-five cents an hour? Even I can handle that math.
All those zeros.
Yeah, the, the, I'll tell you, the zeros are great. Um, I mean, it seems like that's kinda low. Um, I mean, uh, you know, uh, we were just talking about the minimum wage. I mean, I, I would be in favor of upping that. Um, I don't know, it, it seems a little demeaning to, to make somebody work a hundred hours, you know, at, at six seventy-five an hour. Um, you know, especially when you're talking about seniors, um, you know. Yeah, I don't know, it, it just.
I think you answered your own question, Alex, when we had, about the first part of what's the value. Some of it is, pardon the expression, but I'm gonna use it anyway, make work, and some of it is high, high value work, and, 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 you know, I, I think if we had people who were doing work that we would have otherwise had to pay eighteen, twenty dollars an hour for, I agree with you. But if people are doing work that probably wouldn't have been outsourced and done anyway, why are we gonna move it up to a high, a high?
I mean, I guess, to me, it's just sort of like, and I get that the value, uh, you know, that we're getting back is, as you say, mixed. Uh, I don't know, to me, it's just sort of a matter of dignity, you know. Uh, you, you're making people work awfully hard for that six seventy-five. So, I mean, I guess I would, I would move to, I, I would make a motion to, uh, amend the policy, um, to change six seventy-five to, uh, nine hundred. So that people are at least getting nine dollar, I don't know, and even that feels a little rough, um, you know, cause it's below minimum wage.
Can I, can, just to make comment, and I, I'm, I'm torn on this one too, because I, in principle, agree that it is, seems like on its face a paltry sum. The only thing I would add is, again, it, it's not a true employment relationship. These aren't really truly town employees. They're not getting a wage. They're getting a discount on their property taxes, which is why our level of expectation is pretty low. And if you add cost to it, then as, um, as the person who's, you know, responsible for the departments that these people are plugged into, I'd, I'd increase my expectation of what we're getting. Um, the other thing is, it costs the town more than that amount, as we just pointed out. Um, if you wanted to cap it at fifteen people, um, or some number of people, so we stay at the twenty thousand, um, and increase the, the abatement for those people, I, I think that's fine. Like, as Paul said, we haven't hit the twenty-seventh, you know, regularly anyway, but if you increase that twenty thousand dollar cap, that has budget implications.
No, I, I get that. And i- in my understanding, from what I've ju- just heard is, you know, we're talking about twenty thousand dollars, you know, which is kind of a, maybe not even a rounding error. So, um, I mean, I'm just, I'm just like, somebody who is taking advantage of this, I'm assuming really needs the money, you know. Um, so, so anyway, that's my motion. I'm, I'm gonna, I would move to amend the policy to, uh, replace the number six hundred and seventy-five dollars with nine hundred dollars.
Okay, and then also leaving the total in, in the fund at twenty thousand, oh, correct?
Correct. And, and, and just for a stake of discussion, I, if, if we got to the point where there were more people that were applying than we had for the twenty thousand, then we could revisit increasing it to twenty thousand. But as for now, that, my motion would just be to replace six seventy-five with nine hundred.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second it for purpose of discussion.
Yeah, we're not gonna have a discussion.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, well, um, and, and I, my question then would be, have we exhausted, like, do pu- do we spend all twenty thousand? I mean, do people? We don't. So it isn't like we're, we're overdoing it, and so, um, you know, like, cause I think that's important. And maybe it's something that people don't wanna participate in, cause they don't really think it's worth their time also, you know. And, and maybe it's something that they, they kinda need, but then feel, well, you know, it, it's six seventy-five an hour. You know, I, I could be bagging groceries at Big Y or something, I don't know. I mean, maybe, I don't know.
In, in the policy, if the motion is carried, I wouldn't want to, uh, uh, adjust the language, um, which is really a derivative where it says, the program will provide a max twenty thousand dollars abatement, which is equivalent to approximately thirteen seniors and thirteen veterans. I just wanna change that equivalency commensurate to the nine hundred, just so it's consistent.
It becomes eleven seniors and eleven veterans. So it's twenty-two people is what it comes to.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Right, and I, and I think we all would be, yeah.
You know, the thing is, I mean, I don't administer this program. The council on aging director does. I don't know how many people have signed up for it, and may have already been promised to be placed at this time, because the applications were due. Um, so she may have committed to twenty-five people.
We'd be setting policy for next year anyway.
Oh, well, okay, fine, I, I.
Since you've already done the app process?
That, then if that's clear, that this would go in for the next year's, um, application process, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that we're not caught in between here.
Well, the other thing we could do is get that in details and then vote on it in a future meeting.
We could.
We could do that, if we wanted to do it for this year.
So, um, so the applications are still open right now?
Again, I, the, the council on aging director is the one who administers this, so where it is in the whole process, I, I, I cannot tell you.
Do, do back on December second.
But you don't know that, cause it says December second, two thousand thirteen, so you don't know.
Same, same December second each year.
It's usually the beginning of, of December.
So Alex, did you want it this year or next year?
Well, I, I, I think maybe for clarity, it makes sense for, for December twenty sixteen.
Okay, so it would be next year.
And then what we do, we'd have it on the agenda next year and maybe November. So we'd have this discussion before the application process. Well, we'd be all set next year anyways, but, but thereafter being November. And that's, Debbie, that's something we can just do on the calendar.
Review.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question? And, and maybe, I'm not sure we have all the right people here, but, I mean, is this an all or nothing? I mean, it, it, there, there's a lot of statements here about the assessment by the director of the council on aging, and who in her sole discretion, and on and on and on and on, but what if they, and I, and I don't know anything about the, you know, the, the statement of being, you know, using senior circuit breaker and state income guys, I don't understand any of that stuff. But somebody may determine six hundred and seventy-five is the appropriate amount, a- as opposed to nine hundred. So we're saying it doesn't matter what you need or what the determination is. We're saying, you work a hundred hours, you're gonna get nine hundred dollars off your, off, off your tax bill.
The, the guidelines from the state recommend that the policy fall in between the federal and the state minimum wages, somewhere's in that range. But not below the lowest one. I think that's what the ruling is on the, on the state regulations.
I, you know, fortunately, I didn't bring the right.
Yeah, I, I've read it. It's, it's, it's between the two, but not below the lowest.
The administration of the program is gonna be the administration of the program.
Right.
Okay, this doesn't change any of that. Um, we have fourteen applications, so you could do it effective right now.
Is that all we had this year was fourteen? Okay, yeah, we could.
Well, then in that case, my motion would be for this year.
Yeah, we could do it right now.
And the, uh, and I, I can't imagine there's anyone whose tax bill is less than nine hundred dollars in our town.
I can't imagine, unless they're, unless they're living under a rock.
It's the new trend of those small houses.
I, I just, you know, I, I, I'd like to leave it to encourage as many, maximum number of people. I think the process we have is good. I'm gonna vote against the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, the motion was to set the, set the limit at nine hundred dollars or nine dollars?
Nine hundred dollars.
Well, and so that it says it's nine dollars.
Yeah, nine dollars per hour, nine hundred dollars. And leave the twenty thousand in as it was and make it, uh, active for this year.
Did we get a comment from, what, what becomes the cost to the town? Cause right now, you said it's seven hundred, at six seventy-five, it's seven hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-two cents a.
If anybody has a calculator, take that nine hundred and divide it by point nine two three five.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let.
Point nine two three five? So seven something percent benefit?
Five that we have to put in for FICA and, and social security.
It used to be seven, so I.
So it's nine, it goes to nine seventy-four.
It goes nine seventy-four. That's what it would cost the town per individual.
And that would come out of the twenty thousand.
You could do probably twenty-one, you'd still have a limit of twenty-one.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yep.
All in favor of the policy is, uh, placed by, the motion by Alex? All opposed? Three, two.
I have a question. Um, is this on the website, under the veterans section, or or under, only under the COA, or is it on, in your area? Where do people find us?
Uh, I don't have it u- under finance, quite honestly, so whether it's, uh, under the council on aging or under the veterans, um, I, I don't know if it's there.
Could you find out, Steven, where people find us on the website?
I think we, uh, Debbie, we've updated our policy section, but we'll, we'll update the policy and put it on the, in our select board policy section.
I would imagine the council on aging advertised it somehow, whether it's through their newsletter or, or something.
And the veterans also, the agent has.
We do, we do, I mean, obviously, we got fourteen applications, so we do promote the program. The, where the, where the policy, it's, it is administered by COA, which is why I'm not surprised that our select board policy manual. The, where the, where the policy, it's, it is administered by COA, which is why I'm not surprised that our select board policy manual wasn't updated.
There's a lot of policies in there.
Okay.
That'd be noted in the annual review.
IT.
No smile, I didn't get a smile on.
Blame the IT department.
Yeah, blame the IT department, all right, uh, set annual town meeting. Stephen, do you have the, anything other than what was given out by the town clerk?
I do not.
Richard.
Yeah.
Before we get into this, eh, the, the reason why I'm raising this now is cause I'm wondering whether. I ought to, uh, recuse myself, because it's something that could have potentially affect me, because I'm up for election. And so my question is, cause I've never heard us really talking about this, and I, and I imagine this re-. Uh, I don't recall anybody recusing themselves in the past.
There's no financial stake in mind, so you, you, it, it's clearly we don't have to recuse ourselves.
Well, it was the one that just came up, we, we, where we got an opinion on this from the state, but basically, in the open meet, in the, um, ethics guidelines, basically. Like, you voting on the tax rate is the same thing, you, you're voting on tax rate for your own house, but by virtue of your service.
But that's unavoidable.
Right, but then, but that's a community, it's a community-wide decision, just like the election day is a community-wide decision, so. I, I believe this is, cause we, like I said, we just went through this with another thing.
Right.
We just, uh, my view is that, I thought it was clear that these certain things were covered.
I mean, I mean, I guess, so, all I'm gonna say is, I'm, I'm going to abstain from voting, uh, because it, it feels a little uncomfortable to be. Uh, voting on something that could, you know, uh, affect me directly like.
Well, the annual town meeting's not gonna affect you.
Oh, I, oh, I thought we were talking about the, the elections.
No, we're doing the annual town meeting.
The election doesn't affect you.
Yeah, done, the election doesn't affect you, but you, you have.
There's any value to what day or the other?
By, I guess by law, it has to be held by May tenth, by charter and all, by two thousand sixteen, that is the last possible day to hold it.
Tuesday in May.
Second Tuesday in May, yeah.
Is it by then or on that date?
Eh, by that date or on that date, but it has to be done by that.
Plus, we've got all the second Tuesdays in May booked at the gym for, like, the next several years, I think, because we did.
So that's pretty well the same time we have it every year.
And that's true of the election too.
I mean, I think when the charter first came out, you had it at the end of April, because the charter allowed, and there was some. It, it really became problematic with the budget, cause you tightened up the budget process by a couple of weeks, so it reverted back to the.
We can't hold it any later now.
I don't believe so.
No, no, I, I checked, it can't be any later, that's for sure, so I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to adopt the May tenth, two thousand sixteen for our annual town meeting date.
I'll second it.
No, I, no, I'm asking for a motion.
You're asking for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, second, Tom's second. Is there any, any discussion on the, uh, May tenth, or, uh, May tenth? Okay, seeing no discussion, all in favor? Now, uh, move on to the, uh, annual town election, this one gets a little bit more complicated this year, as was brought to light by the, uh. Town clerk, we've got a lot of activity taking place this year. And I guess, when I read down through the thing, the Tuesday, April fifth, she was, she was outlining. Just three different dates that we could pick, with the amount of time involved, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is that what everybody else read it as?
Yeah.
But, but she's not setting Tuesday, April fifth as the election.
No, no.
No, no, she's saying.
She's backing up from the town election, uh, ac- and actually the, it's actually she's going from the town meeting. To when there could be, uh, request for, uh.
No, she is, she is asking for it, we push back to April.
No.
Yeah, preliminary election has historically been scheduled May, but I am proposing that we push it back to April due to the demands during May, including preparation for annual town meeting for this.
But we've had that in the past, preliminary's been in April before.
I'm just reading what the clerk gave us, folks.
Yeah, so.
She is, she is proposing, because they, they've got a lot more election activities gonna take place this year.
I, and the election day, she says, I guess is June fourteenth, so I'm.
She's got, she's setting, she's recommending goes on election day of June fourteenth.
No, she's not, that's, that's for, that's not our election.
No, she's put, the preliminary is if there's more than one person running. So the preliminary runoff, but election day is Tuesday, June fourteenth, right? So, she's recommending the preliminary, if we have three people or four people running for select board. Or school committee, then we have the preliminaries.
That's the election date.
Right, that's, that's set.
No, it's not.
Well, basically, that is a different election, that's not our town election.
That's what she's requesting to be our town election.
She's requesting this one down here, Mark.
No, that's only, no.
Yeah, read it.
I've read it.
Okay, well, then read it again.
She's saying that if more than three people apply for a two-position board. That will need to be a preliminary election on that date, but that's not the town election date. The town election date will be.
It was, it was always June.
Tuesday, June fourteenth.
Yeah, June ninth, June, June fourteenth, okay.
She's recommending it be June fourteenth, with setting, uh, if needed, a preliminary election would be held.
In those, either one of those three dates.
No, in April.
Yeah, in April, that's what I'm saying, these are preliminary election dates. Which one do we want to set for a preliminary, if we need?
Okay, maybe I'm misreading, I thought she recommended a whole s- schedule here, and all we need is a motion to either approve the schedule.
No.
No, w- we're gonna, we're supposed to pick one of these April ones for the preliminary, if, if it's needed. That's all.
Basically, what you're looking at is, there's a series of triggers, or dominoes, if you will, that fall into place once you've picked the date. And so if you make it the preliminary day of April fifth, it shortens the timeline to get nomination papers and submit them. And, um, voter registration, all tho- all those other pieces that need to fall into place.
Right.
So it's basically, pick your preference.
Why would we not have the, the election, any, the preliminary election April twenty-sixth? I see no argument here that says, we can't do it April twenty-sixth.
Well, we can do it April twenty-sixth.
Why would we not do it?
Well, if she gave, she gave you three options, it's up to the board, select which one they want.
Given us thirty-three options, but we've always done it.
We could've talked.
Well, it's in the end of April, yeah.
As late as possible.
Well, the only thing with the April twenty-sixth, is that, is that a school holiday, is that a school vacation week?
Is it?
I, I don't, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
I wouldn't, uh, wouldn't know if I had a calendar, though.
But, you know, there might be people away that week, so that's the only thing I bring to your attention.
When's the holidays?
Uh, the, like, the night. Usually, it's, again, it's usually the third, like, the third week almost is the school vacation.
It's the week of the eighteenth.
The week of the eighteenth.
This is also a preliminary too, Mark.
So the week of the eighteenth is vacation, so April twenty-sixth is not school vacation time.
Preliminary as early as you could have it.
I just didn't want it to fall.
Why, if you got five people, you don't wanna narrow it down to three?
No. People aren't gonna think about it till later.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just wondering when the religious holidays are, um. So, I don't see any reason not to keep to the twenty-sixth.
Okay, well, somebody place a motion.
I move the preliminary election is April twenty-sixth.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, all opposed?
No, okay.
Okay, okay, we got any, everything else is set, right?
I think you have to set the, uh, the regular.
Right, we need to set the, the, I move we set the annual town election in June tw- fourteen.
Okay, you got a motion?
Yeah, I just made it, I move we move.
Second.
Uh, maybe the clerk would like to hear what your motion was.
My motion is that we set the annual town election for Tuesday, June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen.
And Marie's second, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, okay. Yeah. Okay, water rate, or the water rate proposal for next fiscal year, Mr. Fister, now we know why you've been here.
Um, I gave preliminary numbers for the, uh, FY seventeen estimated water rate, um. This was, uh, based upon Mario's budget that he submitted to the, to the town manager. Um, taking into consideration what we provided last year, in order to build up our reserves. For, for water, and that amount was another hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be inputted into the calculation. Um, with that budget that was submitted, plus the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserve, we would need to raise two point five million dollars in water revenues. About seventy-four thousand dollars would come from ancillary type of, of revenues that the water department gets. Be it interest or connections and things of that nature, giving us an amount of about two point four three that we would have to raise. Through the rate calculation, um, based upon the amended amount that we, uh, agreed upon last year. As far as a five-year history of, of the units that we bill, the seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand units. Um, it would bring our water rate to three dollars and eight cents, from what it currently is at, it's two dollars and eighty-four cents. Um, again, i- it's, it's a mathematical equation, fairly, fairly straightforward. Um, the biggest jump, I mean, that, that from a two dollars and eighty-four cent to a three oh eight is a twenty-four cent increase. Um, basically, that jump is all attributable to the Springfield charges that they're estimating for the town of Long Meadow. Uh, the estimated two thousand and seventeen budget from the city of Springfield is nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. Or about a dollar twenty-five of that recommended rate, or proposed preliminary rate. As opposed to the FY sixteen amount that we're expected to be charged of eight hundred and five thousand dollars. So the biggest increase, eh, eh, again, is coming from our purchase from the city of Springfield of our water.
Richard.
Marie has a question.
Go ahead.
Um, my understanding is the reason we're talking about doing it now is because they were coming out with what they were actually, instead of estimates. Their actual charges to us were coming out in December, is that correct?
The reason why we're doing it now, because when we were setting rates last June and July. The select board had a policy that they wanted to announce rates before consumption was, uh, began.
Right.
And because we were in relatively dire straits last June, when we were setting rates. This select board amended their policy to state that the rates that were voted in June and July would go into effect immediately with the billing that was gonna take place in. September, that would have then taken consideration the consumption that was three months prior to that time going all the way through. So you, you folks kind of amended this, and we kinda, and it was kinda discussed, well, how can we get back on track? To announce the rates prior to consumption. And one of the options to announce rates prior to consumption was, let's do the rates that much earlier.
Okay, but when do we find out from Springfield exactly what they're gonna charge us?
They, they, they.
So this is not an estimate, this is actually.
Not an estimate, that is the amount that the city of Springfield has sent to water and sewer department for the estimated FY seventeen costs.
And my second question is, on those increases, uh, is there a percentage of that is because of the changes in the capital that we have to pay a percentage of? And, uh, the capital improvements?
I forget what the breakdown was.
For water and sewer? For water and sewer. I don't think their estimate, um, included the increased percentage for, um, the capital stuff they're doing.
When do we find that out?
I don't have that answer.
So will we, I mean, but we're gonna find out sometime in the next six months, they'll say, oh, by the way, we owe this on the capital improvements?
I, I don't think they'll change the rate from what they proposed already.
Be something in the future.
In the future, okay, so it's nothing that's gonna come back later, okay, thank you.
Go ahead. I know we're talking about water, but th- there's a link between water and sewer. Only in terms of the allocation of DPW expenses to those two departments, and I know over the years, Mario, this predates you. That, that we've moved toward a shift in, uh, overall DPW, uh, allocations. From i- into the five DPW divi- departments of water, sewer, roads and streets, and maintenance and grounds. And so, I guess my question is, because I saw a significant difference between the DPW. What I'll call salary, I'm not gonna talk about, uh, expenses, cause I assume those are pretty well water, sewer. But what is it that separates out water versus sewer allocations? Of the salary expenses out of the Department of DPW that puts so much more into water than into sewer?
You may recall that a number of years ago, the Audit Committee brought up the, uh, question of, are, are we doing our allocations properly?
Right, right.
And what we did at the time, or a few years back, is we had the employees, this is.
Track their time, right.
We tracked their time, and that we then developed what the model should look like. Um, based upon that allocation that they did over a six-month period, or if you get exactly how long, it was actually longer than six months. We then took that, because there was, in, in the area, especially of the sewer, because there was such a wide range of what we were actually charging for sewer personnel. To what that allocation actually amounted to, over a three-year period, we were going to implement that correct allocation. And FY seventeen is the third year of that three-year allocation, um, if you look at the sewer, uh, rate. A- a- actually, I mean, there's a number of full-time equivalents, and that you will see that the full-time equivalents, we've actually been shifting out of the. Or back into the general fund and out of the sewer fund, um, because of that allocation process that was done years ago.
Right, there's three point six three in sewer and five point four five in, in, in water, I guess.
The water, the water actually hadn't changed that much, it was really the sewer that you noticed that the big change was, was we were actually charging. Uh, or putting into the sewer rate, um, a little bit more than probably should have been, and now that allocation process is going back to the general fund.
So it's not that, it's not that water is going up, it's that the sewer is going down because of.
Right, the sewer is going down, basically, because the allocation is being shifted mainly over the three-year period from the sewer over to the general fund. The water did not change that, that great of an amount.
I have another question, please set these rates, and then, Richard, you were talking about, the next meeting talking about water meter.
Yeah, that's, that's something for next year.
But, oh, so this wouldn't, cause I'm saying, if we do that, that's gonna really affect.
No, no, I, I, it'd be too quick, depending on, depending on which direction the board wants to go, it'd take a year to put that program in effect.
All right, so we wouldn't run into a deficit later, okay, thank you.
And, 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 do we have a sense now? Of where we're running relative to this seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Units this year, I mean, cause, because I, I've been on the board long enough to know that we've been, we were well up there in the eight hundred and. Something thousand, we had a couple of dry years, or excuse me, a couple of very wet years, and so water use went down. Is seven eighty-eight, I, I see your calculation, and it looks like it's still the five-year average. But that, that's clearly a big.
I, I actually did not look at the consumption units that were billed in September, quite honestly. What I will tell you is that the revenue is up three hundred thousand dollars. From where it was last year to this year, and it's not only based upon the, the rate increase. From two seventy-eight to two eighty-four that took place, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, from two seventy-four to two eighty-four in, uh, in FY sixteen. But also because of the, the climate and the larger consumption of water.
Well, but when you say revenue is up three hundred thousand, does that mean our water stabilization, or, or, you know. I, I, I use stabilization fund and you use enterprise fund, is, is that up closer now to our? I mean, I see your projection of it being five hundred and three thousand dollars, the water retained earnings fund. But are you saying that, that we're gonna be at least at, at five hundred and three thou- cause I, what I don't wanna do is, here is overcharge people for water. And end up with a water real, retained earnings fund of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, cause we don't need to overcharge people just to put money into a fund. You know, if we don't have to.
I, I, I'm, I'm projecting at this point in time that our water fund and the revenues, where we were three hundred thousand dollars short in FY sixteen. We're, because of the, um, because of the changes that we made, we're gonna be up five hundred thousand dollars in FY seventeen. And again, some of it has to do with consumption, and some of it has to do with the rate increase, I did not look at the consumption per se, so I can't tell you what. Cons- what, the amount of units that were billed out in September of this year, as opposed to September of last year, I don't have that.
So, and, and, I'm, I'm not fighting you, Paul, here, right, but, but when I read what you did here, what you're saying is that. Cause it says projected FY sixteen, so the way I read it was, at the end of this fiscal year. You would anticipate that we would have a retained earnings fund of about five hundred thousand, and our target, by the way, is five hundred thousand.
That's the minimum, right.
We'd be at five hundred thousand, you know, which is good, but, you know, my, my mental think is saying, so we do that for seventeen. We're gonna gain, gain another three hundred thousand dollars in seventeen, if all other things are equal, which they never are. And we could be literally at eight hundred thousand dollars in, in FY, at the end of FY seventeen.
Yep.
And if we do that, you know, I mean, do we want, you know, we're projecting now. Twenty, twenty-two months in advance or. twenty twenty two months in advance or something like something ridiculously.
But re- re- remember, your policy says a minimum of five hundred, a maximum of one point five. So you're you're basically. And 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 the the nice thing about having that reserve, quite honestly, is we wouldn't go into the bond market when we have to do certain projects.
Right, and one of the things, and I've been pretty aggressive at saying, let's take it out of there instead of bonding water, so I I'm I'm fine with that. The other thing, Paul, I just thought I'd I'd point out, and I just wanna find this here, is that last year, if you recall, I had put together a a five year projection of the water and sewer analysis based on numbers we had last year, and then we we tried smoothing it out. And actually, I took it to FY twenty, I didn't share this with everybody else, but today, but it actually had us at a three oh eight rate for this coming year, so it's consistent with what we were doing back a year ago when we were looking ten years down the road of or or I guess seven years down the road. That we we said we'd be at three oh eight for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen. So I, you know, I don't have a lot of objections to it, I'm just wanna make sure we're not overcharging our customers.
That's what your report said before, I can't see you object to it.
Because I wanna make sure we're not overcharging customers for for water.
Are you looking for two separate motions?
I think before you vote, I think you should also take the next agenda item, which is the water sewer enterprise fund capital availability. Because it may affect the rate and what you're thinking about of capital. Um, you may wanna have that discussion before you actually set the, if I if you're gonna set the rates tonight, great, I didn't anticipate you folks would be doing it tonight, but God bless you.
I I I think seeing it one night, set setting it the same night is probably aggressive too. But but Paul, the question is, you've got in this proposed budget, right? Bonded reserves of bonded expenditures of five hundred and seventy seven thousand.
That will, that is actual, that is actual our debt service for FY seventeen at this point in time.
With no new projects.
With no new projects, that is correct.
So if we were to add projects.
If you were to add projects, uh, again, if you go back to the water retained earnings estimate that is in the lower left hand corner, you will see that in in the capital budget for FY seventeen, there's three hundred and thirty one thousand dollars requested for the capital budget. So what I have said there is that we have a hundred, we have basically two hundred thousand dollars in our water reserves right now. We have, I'm anticipating again, five hundred thousand dollars in excess revenues. I'm anticipating that there's going to be some turnbacks from the from the appropriation because there was a a a fairly large credit from the city of Springfield that is hitting our books in FY seventeen. And that we could basically fund the the water capital request out of reserves and available appropriations this fiscal year so that we wouldn't have to bond.
The amount of three hundred thirty one thousand four hundred eighty dollars?
And and what we'd have to take it from two sources, we basically have to wipe out the reserves down to zero. And then we would have to take, what I would anticipate the extra funds to be in the uh in the water Springfield charges because of the large credit that is applicable to this fiscal year based upon last year's consumption. It was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I believe.
But so so Stephen, the question I we have for you or I have for you is what's going before the capital planning commission committee or projects that would draw on water and water capital, right?
There, I think there are two projects requested.
There are two projects.
Yeah, um, yeah, you have right in front of you.
Uh, two projects, Branch Street Water Main Replacement and Sunset Lane Water.
Place three hundred and change combined, right?
Branch Street, what was the other one, Mario?
Branch and Sunset.
What size mains are they?
Um, Branch is a eight inch and Sunset's a four going to an eight.
So so absent any unanticipated major water main breaks that dr- I I know that's the, but that's what the res- the reserve is for.
It's gonna be six degrees and you're saying that right now. Those guys that called that a midnight.
You've got a balance here that says that this proposed rate would cover those two projects. But that doesn't allow for, if I can't, a truck that we're gonna spend fifty percent out of out of the capital stabilization fund, twenty five percent out of sewer, twenty five percent out of water, which we do every year with trucks and.
But there, yeah, I mean, we do have a few vehicles that are split.
Well, r- r- right, I don't say it's wrong, Stephen, I'm just saying that that this three hundred thirty one thousand four eighty that Paul plugged in here.
Right, that did ma- if if we include those water then uh or those the vehicles, then that number may be low. But I I would throw out an option for you is that potentially we could take one of these projects and and postpone the allocation of that or the appropriation of that hopefully until the fall. So we wouldn't have the out, we wouldn't have the appropriation done in FY sixteen if at all possible, I don't know how much of 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 an emergency those projects are, but we would appropriate the fund at the Fall Town Meeting in two thousand and sixteen so that they'd be shovel ready in the spring of two thousand and seven seventeen, I think.
But and what does that do for us financially, I mean, the.
Then it would, instead of having three hundred and thirty one thousand dollars coming out of our reserves in sixteen, we would have a lesser amount and we'd be able to pick up the portions of the vehicles.
Right, but then we just have to spend that money in FY seven, I mean, it's it's pay me now or pay me later, isn't it? I know, that's what I'm saying, so why would we wanna, why would we postpone something and not be able to do it this summer?
Well, be if be cuz we may not have the funds available this summer, if we have to add if we have to add vehicles, if we have to add fifty thousand dollars worth of vehicles, we cannot expend excess revenues at this point in time.
We but we could make a, take a vote to either bond it or pay for it and then see in the fall whether we wa- we wanted to actually bond it or pay for it out of cash and still get it done.
Right, right, we could still get it done, we would probably have to go through the bonding process.
Stephen, I think what I'd like to recommend is that you've got other outstanding charges. Why don't we take this to the next meeting, bring the rest of the charges in so we can get them all the way down, whatever's in the capital program being proposed.
Wait, I can I can answer the question in a second.
No, what we were talking about earlier in the meeting, the um Catch Basin uh on Avondale Road. Yeah, and so the and I'm sorry, the and it's a broken.
Sewer, I'm sorry, uh, storm drain.
Storm drain, okay. All right, and so, all right, so we had this discussion, this is not part of that, okay.
This goes out to Lake Pond and Street. Sewer goes to Bondi's Island and Street.
It's the storm drain is funded out of the general fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
All right, so so that's an unexpected expense, I take it, I mean, how how much are we looking at for that?
Well, I don't think it's as much as you think, there's excavation, pipe, um, labor. Less than five grand. Doing it ourselves, less than five grand.
But the point is that we're gonna be able to fit that into our regular budget.
Yeah, that's that should already be covered.
We're talking about our capital projects now, what concerns me is that we're talking about some major ones that are out there, but one of the things that I heard a few years back is that we should have a plan that would get rid of those four inch water pipes that are out there and that is, so but we're just talking about the the major projects here, are we talking about are we gonna, should we have all the capital projects that we're hoping to get done or what we are doing in the next five years?
That's part of capital projects review, but we're just talking about the water budget here.
Well, you're talking about the capital projects that the water would be paying for.
Next fiscal year, that's all we're looking at.
So what I'm saying is, why are we just looking at those, isn't there, are aren't we supposed to have a phase in for the that's next year and we're dealing with the four inch pipes too?
That's what you said, Branch Street and Sunset Street are the two streets we're gonna do next year, right?
Yeah, but those are streets. I'm asking Mario, uh, isn't there a whole section of some houses out there that have four inch pipes in front of them?
I don't think there's a lot left, I think there are a few, and I think that's maybe year seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, those will, those will also come as part, as capital projects.
Yeah, cuz my concern is I understood that those were high priority, that we had to be doing the four inch pipes.
Long term, and we do chip off a little each year. But then there's one, then there are other issues, age of pipe, number of leaks it's had that are also priority, that are also factors in the prioritization. So the four inch pipes are, I mean, it's they are a priority in that it's a, it's better for water pressure, especially in fire suppression, to have the larger mains. And we do have a plan that I've seen in that each year we do a certain, well, basically what we can afford to do, to be honest with you. Um, the vehicles, if I can just kinda tie the whole thing together, it's about twenty five thousand, there's um, sixty five hundred for a share of the mo- automated gate. Um, there is about ten five for the water's share of a um working foreman's truck. Uh, and then um, uh, the assistant dirt, then the and P, the two superintendent's vehicle, Pete Herbert's vehicle. So that's, and that's about fourteen thousand.
So it's so it's maybe twenty five thousand dollars.
Twenty five thou- twenty five thousand seven hundred thirty seven dollars, and we're carrying out vehicles.
I I thought, Stephen, the reason I asked is cuz in the past, Mario, you have been here. All our major plow trucks, which have been, you know, eighty five, hundred and forty thousand dollar truck, we twenty five percent went to water, twenty five percent to sewer, and and there have been years when that's been pretty costly as part of the water and sewer capital project, if that's not gonna be part of it, it's a a big difference from what it had been in the past.
Not this year.
But those.
Oh, I'm just saying, it's a big, it's a difference. Oh, I'm not saying they don't get used for it, Stephen, I'm just saying that nobody's proposing we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on vehicles coming out of out of the water and sewer.
Not this year, no.
Right, this year, that's all.
Now, I recall, we talked about this pretty extensively in the summer, right, you, Mark, you did a presentation. On these rates, you know, and I and I guess I'm wondering what's holding us up from just taking a vote on it now, do we really need any additional figures, cuz it looks like.
The the fact is, we don't need to make, take a vote today, cuz they're not going, when when's the, when's our billing schedule for Paul, that the new rate consumption will go into?
The meters will be read in the early, in early February, I believe, for a March billing.
That seems right.
Yeah, or the, yeah, it'd be, the the me- they need to be read in early February. So if you wanna announce before consumption, you'd probably have to look at your next meeting to to set the rates or some special meeting, uh, maybe the first one in February, maybe.
We have all the information available tonight, though.
Yeah, we're not talking a dramatic shift in what we'd be looking at.
The only thing, the only thing missing is twenty five thousand dollars.
Twenty five, and the biggest question I would have is is again, you you've built in an amount of reserves beginning last year, you wanna continue building in the amount of reserves, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is built in to the reserve amount in FY seventeen. I mean, do you still wanna, I mean, again, I put it in because that was the amount in sixteen, I kept it standard, so that would be something I I wish you folks.
Can I get a quick straw vote then, uh, I'm going to vote on it tonight, let's, let's. Up, you, Mark, up or down? Okay, fine, and somebody place a motion?
I'll move, we set a a water rate of three dollars and eight cents per hundred cubic feet of usage uh for beginning with the consumption following the next water meter read.
It'd be billed in September.
To be billed in September of two thousand sixteen. Did you get that, Debbie?
Would be the billing.
Would be billing September two, but it begins with consumption in in February and to be billed in September two thousand sixteen.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion required? Yes, Alex.
I'm gonna be voting against it because I'm in favor of tiered water rates, we've had this discussion before.
That's gonna come up as part of the presentation I'm gonna give next week.
Oh, but but that's not the rate.
No, 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 it'll be something that we can chew on for next year. I'm just letting you know that that that's one of the considerations in that.
Okay, well, that's good that we're still thinking about it, I mean, but you guys have heard my uh argument on that, so I'm not gonna rehash it. Uh, but I mean, just, you know, it it does allow for some rate relief for low water users and more importantly, tiered rates would encourage consumption, uh, I'm uh.
Conservation.
Conservation, you know, which is important because there's a state goal that we are way, way uh he- above. And I'd rather us to try to bend our consumption toward that state goal over a period of time rather than face mandatory limits.
Okay, well, now that now that we've told you that we're gonna be talking about you, you're gonna vote for the rates tonight?
No.
Oh, you wasted my time. Okay, any more discussion? See, no discussion, all in favor? Stephen, you had.
Want to vote, take votes against?
No, 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 we went up.
Votes against?
No, he voted.
We're going for the water rate.
Right, and you said all in favor and four hands went up, I said you wanna ask for votes against.
Oh, I thought you said you wanna vote again. Alex had already said he was in oppose, so we had, we had his opposition vote, he pledged himself on camera twice. Got a motion for the sewage?
Again, the same type of calculation was done for the sewer. Um, again, uh, the the amount of salaries because of that shift of the allocation is actually going down a little bit. Um, the Springfield charges are not nearly as as high of an increase um coming on on the sewer side. Uh, there is a hundred thousand dollars built into reserves as was the same and in the FY sixteen rate. Um, and there's actually a a small reduction of two cents based upon the mathematical equation that comes out with all those tidbits.
I'm gonna move that we we establish a sewer rate of two dollars and fifty two cents, which is an equi- which is a s- same as it's been this past year for sewer usage beginning with the billing in September of two thousand sev- sixteen, essentially sewer usage in March of two thousand sixteen subject to what a the current exclusion of
Two hundred and twenty.
Two hundred and twenty units, that's what it is. Subject to exclusion of two hundred and twenty units. And my, go ahead, that's my motion.
I was gonna go for a second. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And my my discussion is that we are facing.
We can have discussion now.
We are facing a potential significant sewer bill for replacement and engineering of the North Sewer Interceptor. And I think keeping a steady rate and making sure that we have some money in the sewer retained earnings bill of fund that might be appropriated toward that North Interceptor would be a smart move. That's why I'm looking for.
How about CFO's input on that?
Uh, given the fact that if you have a large bill coming up and if you wanted then in the future years offset some of the increase that that North Interceptor Sewer is going to um have effect on the rates, um, again, you would use some reserves that you would build up with that two cents, um, sure, I would recommend the same.
What's two cents gonna generate us?
Two cents is gonna generate about fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, but isn't that a million dollar?
Yeah, multi, I think it's more than, more than one, I think it's two or three.
Two or three for the North Interceptor?
Uh, don't hold me to that number, but I don't, I think it was more than one. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, okay, I like that answer. That's three, that was a little crazy. Okay, so we don't know what it is. Okay, so the the two, the two cents is fourteen thousand dollars, this. It it helps, and and you're right, we do have a major, major cost coming up on that dead interceptor. It's gonna be far in excess of fourteen thousand dollars a year, but any other discussion, right?
I have a question about that, and I know we started the design on that, and at least we allocated the money for that. And it, back then, it was like one point five, when are we thinking we'll actually break ground on that, what what year?
Oh, I think it's probably not till next summer, not this summer, so seventeen.
I'm sure there's a, there's a permitting path on that, that's gonna be a a s- a straight uphill climb.
Do you, do you have a, and I'm not trying to pin you down, if you don't have it, do you have a status on the design on that, what percent we're at now?
I don't.
Okay. But that is still, that's still moving along correctly. Cuz it was money appropriated for that design one. Okay, any other discussion on the uh motion and the second from uh Tom?
No, I'm supporting it.
All in favor? All opposed? All of them voted this time.
I I will just offer that the uh the sewer debt service does start to drop in FY eighteen to pick up that project fairly you know, fifty thousand dollars a year, it drops for a couple of years, so I mean, that project will come in and the minimal impact on on the actual rate because of the timing of the debt.
Yeah, I would imagine next time we have a briefing, we'll have some more stats on that, you'll have some updated information across us.
Can can I just ask a general question of all, Mario, and we're talking water? Have we made any more progress on identifying the discrepancy, I shouldn't say discrepancy, bad choice of word, the differential between purchased water and billed out water, if you recall, you don't recall, Mario, but but we've been, we, you know, we bill based on what our customers use, what our residents use. But we buy what comes through the Forest Land Road Meter. But we buy what comes through the Forest Land Road Meter. And the numbers, we went back and looked at them, are are different and it's it's more than. You know, i- if if it's loss, it's a heck, we got some big leaks and if it's billing or discrepancy, and we said we were gonna try to take a look at. What was normal and what we could do to try to bring those numbers closer together. Part of the issue is timing. You know, but part of the issue also has to do with w- we don't know where the where we are because. We buy from Springfield and we know what we're buying the volume and we never quite know what we're gonna s- what if what we're selling is what we're buying and and.
We had a whole conversation, Pete Herbert, and we covered that. Had we had a couple of reports on it, I mean, I.
Right, and he just said it it's losses and and.
S- some of it is, but I think he he went through a lot of the ways that we do track, we we try minimize unaccounted water.
Right.
And the ways that we track unaccounted water.
But we're still at above eight percent or ten percent.
I think we're within what the acceptable best practices are.
It it was, yeah, cuz it he had it within the best practices.
In my recollection is, I mean, there's like uncertainty, un- unknown, like. We didn't know exactly why we're losing it.
You you. On a large utility system like this, you won't, you won't know. That's why they allow you eight, ten percent. Because you got thousands of valves and thousands of joints. It could be leaking anyplace underground. It it'd never be detected. And and a thirty-eight inch line, the leaks are so small you can't even get it with sound detection. It's an inherent part, that's why they allow that, what what most people consider a ridiculous percentage of eight to ten percent of waste. That also is hydrant use and stuff that's not metered, so it's not just leakage.
Traffic islands with.
Right.
Irrigation that that I'm guessing are not metered, I don't I don't know, but.
Some, I think some are, but most of it's hydrant flushing and main breaks and things like that, but they have, as Pete described, they have metrics on how they calculate. What they estimate to be the um those those unaccounted for uh volumes to be. Um, but we can certainly, I mean, if you wanna go back through that and talk offline, Mark, and figure out.
Well, if we could take the, if we could take that whole system and put it up on top of the ground, we wouldn't have any leaks. Well, we would, we'd have leaks still, but we'd be able to see them. That's the best problem, it's it's underground. Uh, any other business tonight?
Yeah, Finance Subcommittee report.
Okay, okay.
Uh, we met in November. I'm slow getting this to you cuz I had some issues. I had to leave town beginning of December. And um we talked about what the Finance Subcommittee was supposed to be doing and we thought making recommendations to the Select Board. Um, and uh what to audit, improve financial transparency, encouraging long-term budget and decreasing costs. I think these were the conversations we were having and we came up with four uh recommendations or possibilities for the Select Board. To consider um adopting and I just don't know how you want us to do it. Does do they need to be on the agenda? Uh, but these were some of the things we talked about. Mark, do you wanna expand?
I'll I'll just read them so people at home can see what the recommendations are to audit leases. Last year, we started out with a truck lease program. And the question is, before we get into the capital planning uh cycle again, should we look at? What the determination was, success, not success, you know, what we could do better, what we did wrong. Lease versus buy analysis, did we do the right thing last year when we tried it? And any other leases in town that we have, uh a evaluation. There's also a request for capital project completion reports that the. That we think that the Select Board ought to be getting and budget presentation include, we ju- this was Paul Sturzick, this was just one of another review of. Uh, presentation, just the budget presentation to include five years of actual and projected budget costs. I think, you know, it's it's what do we put in the columns? So there's a total of five years showing, uh so we get a couple of. Uh, of of past actual, you know, a couple of past year actuals, kinds of things. And then develop a program allows residents to uh opt out of paper bills and try to pay online with electronic transfers. And how do we, how would we go about doing that if if we thought that was an important thing for residents to be able to do?
Two questions, uh on the budget presentation, you said five columns. Do you want five years of actual expenditures?
No, I it wasn't five years of the actuals, it was cuz one, this year is projected. Next year is next year's budget, so it's three years of.
Okay, which you're okay, which I think I currently have.
I think you only had two, but.
And we were talking not just expenditures, but also revenues. So sometimes revenues come in. At the end of the year and sometimes we don't really see where that balance is in, so like, um like the school budget, they often the. Money will come in in June and we don't really see how that balances out on looking back.
So and and it was really actuals, not budgets, is if you're in the in the past, which is the difference.
Um, and on the bills, um, I believe there is is statute set out for online real estate taxes. Is that, are those the bills that you were actually referring to specifically or was it?
Well, we talked about anything water, I mean.
The question is, is there a process that allows us to do that that? A doesn't cost the town the three percent or two percent or whatever the credit cards are gonna take. And may not cost the the bill so much either. Is there an electronic transfer system or something that's a little bit more? Twenty-first century kind of thing that.
They then, uh we just say it it's the payments that you're you're more like wanting to see electronically as opposed to the actual billing be electronic.
Both, we're lucky, talking about both. There was there was two aspects to that. One is people pop- opt out of paper bills all the time. Our papal statements can residents be allowed to do that and.
Well, if they change email addresses, they're done.
Most people know that nowadays, yeah.
But for me, Paul, the biggest thing i- is, you know, what can we do with EFT kind of systems that that allow people to just. Sweep money and and not that we, you know, wanna be doing a lot of reaching into people's bank accounts, but or any of reaching into people's bank.
Right.
But but something that allows that kind of thing to happen. You know, cuz I I know that, you know, you can go on Quicken, Quicken and pay your bills out of Quicken and you're not paying a three percent fee, so.
But again, this is something that the Select Board has to decide whether these are projects that the Select Board feels it's worth. Pursuing, the Finance Committee doesn't really make that decision on we're gonna pursue any of this.
I mean, to me, the electronic transfers and paying, I mean, to me, that's a no-brainer. You know, if it if it can be done uh cost-effectively, I mean, you know, it, you know. If if everybody else is going to online uh bills in online payment. Uh, I I doubt that we're onto something that nobody else is.
Well, again, we currently do have online payments that are allowed for water, sewer, I think motor vehicle excise tax and property. I'm not quite sure of the cost that is associated with it.
Right.
Um, I don't believe it's as high as three percent, but I I I can get that information as to what the cost is.
But there is a fee for.
I believe there is a fee, right, the transaction fee that is basically the bank charges.
Right.
And so I'm not sure if we need to look at um putting these in front of the vote. I I think we need to put a process in place on. When the subcommittees make recommendations. Uh, that cuz some of these require actual um employee time. So it's not something that we should be doing, but it's something the board should be doing as a group.
I think what I'd recommend is we pass it on to the town manager and let him do some research on these and just take a look at them.
But these are kind of operational things.
Yeah, that's great. And come back, come back next meetings and say, hey, yay, yay, and you know, tell us, tell us what it.
My personal view is that the billing thing is is really a uh consumer driven demand. And if we don't have high consumer demand for paperless billing. Um, it's gonna cost money to implement that change no matter how you slice it. And if the, if our consumers aren't really demanding paperless billing. Then why would we incur the costs to to meet a non-demand? Uh, if there's a way to save, I mean, our our, we do have our billing that we have to do, I'd. I'm gonna guess that the amount of time and money that we'd save on the paper billing wouldn't drop at the commensurate to the cost, but I. But we can, we'll look, I mean, we look at every, we look at all the ideas. I just, you know, I just don't wanna get to a point where we keep saying. Less to the paperless billing, less to the paperless billing, when it doesn't really make sense for us.
Well, right now, I understood, I thought the cost of paper billing was like thirty thousand dollars a year.
I think it's five, isn't it?
Uh, once you add in the uh.
Water bills and the.
Sure, when you add up just the postage for all that.
Right, it's fifty cents.
There is, there's the thirty-one thousand dollar line item just for postage for all those those bills plus accounts payable, so. Yeah, it probably is thirty thousand dollars for for billing by the time you do the actual printing and the postage, um it's probably up there, yes.
And Stephen, the what we don't know is, and currently, you know, the the cost of money isn't really high today, but. But, you know, if you can get paid, the town can get their funds, uh you know, at any earlier, there's there's some value down there, down the road of that too.
I think people have more control over the electronic and they probably push it on the last minute. They probably have a pre-program for the last minute.
They schedule the payment for the last possible, yeah.
As as opposed to putting it in the mail and and worrying about it being late because the mailman couldn't deliver.
Or everyone walks it in. Take up a lot of time, but it's, uh, these are things that, uh, again, if we ask them to consider it, it's taking time. Should we vote? Cuz maybe the consensus is there's, the board's only interested in two of these issues.
My recommendation is to give this list to Stephen, let him report back to us at our next meeting and fill in what what their time requirements and this, that and the other. Just take a general list, take a look at it, let him report back to us.
Okay.
And then, you know, we can chew it over there. By by the way, I think it's great that you guys got these suggestions coming forth cuz these these are, you know, processes we need at least look at.
No, I think.
That's fine. So Stephen, uh, take this as a.
I can tell you that we're not gonna know on the lease. Not till next year. I don't even know, we, I don't even think we have the truck in hand yet.
Oh, okay, cuz I was gonna say, uh, just a a quantitative evaluation of.
Did it push the snow the same and do it, yeah, we we may know, we we won't know that till. No, right, right now we haven't, I don't think we have it.
You jump and head to next meeting, you're not to report to next meeting.
Okay.
You gotta be here now. Oh, wait a minute, are you gonna be at our next meeting?
I will be at the next meeting. It's it's the one, it's the Tuesday meeting, February nineteenth, that I would need to be excused from.
Okay. Okay, and uh, let's see, we're going, I'm going to look at setting up a.
I don't think there is a Tuesday, February nineteenth.
No, it's.
Is it the sixteenth? Whatever the day is.
It's the sixteenth.
It's sixteen?
Of February.
February sixteenth is Tuesday.
Yeah, our next meeting is the nineteenth of January. Yeah, nineteenth of January. Okay, and I'm gonna be looking at setting up a uh possible special meeting on the twenty-sixth, so sometime in the air for the board.
Just before.
We wanted to get.
The MMA.
Yeah, we wanted to get, uh, we wanted to get together and talk about DPW.
Oh, that's after, that's right.
Okay, we wanna talk about DPW, so. Okay, uh, and we are getting ready to go into executive session, so Stephen, uh. I didn't get the uh the reason for executive session.
Uh, litigation, potential litigation.
Okay. So, hey, take a motion to go into executive session?
For a motion, we go into executive session.
Okay, and it take a roll count?
The motion. No, the motion needs to state the purpose.
Needs to state the purpose, purpose. For litigation, yeah. And Debbie, roll call?
Uh, Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to adjourn, go into an executive session. We'll see you in about two weeks. We hope you have an enjoyable evening. If you have any questions, be sure to give us a an email, ring or a telephone call and we'll be promptly answering your questions. Have a nice evening. Thank you.